Thank you everybody and welcome to the Committee de Hore for November 12th, 2019. My name is Armin Herford, I am Acting Mayor this month and I will be chairing this meeting. As always, welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Can I have an adoption of the agenda, please? Moved by Councilor Silver, something like Councilor Race, always a player, fellows of any theories. Getting right into it, we're going to go to, starting with some staff reports. The...
Honiak?
Honiak, thank you. Honiak Park Seedyke, to take away Mr. Olson.
Good morning, Acting Mayor and Council. My name is David Olson, I'm the manager of municipal infrastructure for the District of Squamish and here today to discuss design options for the Hunea Park Seedyke. And the objective is to be able to provide a clear terms of reference in a forthcoming request for proposals to, for detailed design services. So the objective is to receive council endorsement on a preferred design concept for the Seedyke in order to initiate the design and permitting processes. And there's two key items to, I'm looking for decisions on, and one is the alignment and the other is the type of dyke to use. Some background on the park and the area in general. Prior to Western Settlements, the Mamcon Blind Channel was the former mouth of the Mamcon River. In 1921, there was a flood and the river diverted to its current course where it meets up with the Squamish River and it was subsequently dyked to that alignment. The shores of the Mamcon Blind Channel were known by the Squamish Nation as Huneaok, meaning where large war canoes were beached. In 1890, the first steamer dock, a hotel and a trading post were built immediately north of Hunea Park. That was called Masheter's Landing. In 1913, the Pacific Great Eastern Railway established shops, offices and a railway station on the water, adjacent to the water, and that stayed there for roughly six decades. And during that time, their site was also used as a railway log dumping site as you can see in the lower picture there. From 1974 to 1999, the Royal Hadson Steam Train used the site as their terminal station. And if you look on the lower picture, you can actually see that there's a train rate along the water's edge of Hunea Park. This is just in 1999, this aerial photo. The district acquired the land in 2014 and it's currently used for the Huneaik canoe shelter, which is Squamish Nation uses that for rehabilitating traditional canoes. And the Squamish Paddling Club also uses it for boat storage and there's some slacklines, open space, a waterfront trail as part of the current land uses. The land is even zoned as P3, which is park recreational and institutional use. Some background on flood management. In 2017, the district completed a three-year process to prepare an integrated flood hazard management plan. And included in that plan was a coastal flood protection strategy, which included a conceptual Seedyke design. And that indicated the type of dyke to be used and the alignment of the dyke throughout the district's coastal perimeter. The concept design for the area in question was a sheet pile along the foreshore of the west side of the Mamcon Blind Channel I've shown here. And I'll note that different types of dykes were proposed in different areas. So adjacent to the estuary, a green shores type of dyke was used, recognizing that more space is available there and the highly sensitive environment in that area. From a policy perspective, the official community plan includes environmental policy discouraging infill marine areas and recognizes or recommends that dykes should follow the high watermark in order to maintain the marine channel area wherever possible. To apply green shores principles for dyke planning and design wherever possible. From an environmental perspective, or a protection perspective, there is a development permit area, DPA1. Public works projects are exempt from that, but they should be considered in the design. From a coastal flood hazard perspective, the official community plan and the integrated flood hazard management plan recommend upgrading existing seedykes in accordance with the IFHMP and to plan for one meter of sea level rise by year 2100 and two meters by year 2200, which is in line with provincial guidance. Some background on the existing conditions, so the picture on the bottom there is a picture from the water looking at the Hunea Park waterfront. So the existing shoreline is a combination of decaying timber crib walls, substandard riprap or angular rock, and vegetated and eroding shoreline. The south boundary of the park is a continuation of a similar type of shoreline. The north boundary abuts the Syroco sheet pile, you can see in the lower right here. That's built to a height of 4.7 meters elevation and it extends roughly eight meters from the existing shoreline out into the channel. Again, I mentioned the existing land uses earlier, the Squamish Paddling Club, the canoe shelter. There's a public art display, slacklines, trail and open space. The water lot is unused except there is some unofficial boat mooring. As you can see, this picture is taken a couple of months ago, so boats come in and out periodically and So some background on the ongoing and future plans for the area. To the north is the Syroco Development and to the south is the Squamish Yacht Club. There is a proposed pedestrian bridge coming from the waterfront landing site across the water to land at the Victoria Street End. Syroco have potential float homes on their water lot. We have not received an application for that yet, but they have been shown in DP plans as part of the upland development. The DP plans for Syroco also showed a ramp and dock at the Victoria Street End to provide water access as a community amenity. So I note that there is a need to coordinate the pedestrian bridge and the Syroco ramps and dock, and it is possible to locate the Syroco docks and ramp in front of the Hunea Park water lot, and I'll show that in some schematics a bit later. The Squamish Yacht Club upland development, they have not come in with a development application, so their plans are unknown at this point, but it is anticipated that they would continue the sheet pile and that would be built as part of the development of that site. Terms of potential Hunea Park future uses, it's potential to use that for district or community facilities and for continued use as park. So there are two key alignments to consider here that are being presented. The first is to match the high watermark of the dyke, and I note that there, some infill would be required as shown here. So it's proposed to follow the high watermark as an average, but in order to maintain a generally straight dyke alignment, which is much lower cost and simpler, some infill would likely be required. The other option to consider is to match the Syroco dyke alignment, which is eight meters beyond the existing high watermark on average. And then there are two different types of dykes to consider. The first is a sheet pile dyke, the key feature here being that there's a vertical retaining wall that is holding up the slope and is acting as a seepage cutoff wall for flood protection. And the other option is a slope dyke, which uses a slope and riprap, some large angular rock to retain that slope and provide erosion protection. The key difference being the slope obviously occupies a much greater space from a dyke footprint perspective, and so that becomes quite a key consideration as I'll describe shortly. Terms of design considerations and objectives for this Seedyke and for the park, it's desired to maintain flexibility for future land and water uses, and so in that regard, a smaller dyke footprint provides more space for both. It's desired to create and/or maintain water access with some form of ramps and dock. The aim should be to improve the marine habitat beyond what is currently existing. Straight dyke alignment is preferred. It's just lower cost and complexity from an engineering perspective. It also facilitates the waterfront trails, so mild undulations are fine, but sharp bends are difficult and would add cost and complexity. Transitioning from a sheet pile to a slope dyke and then back again on the south end would be problematic, and I'll get into that on the next slides. And then it's also a consideration to leave the main street road end unfinished, and that would be picked up by a developer to the south. So when the Squamish Yacht Club upland development is developed, that developer could build that, so that would save the district some money, and it would also potentially provide a temporary water access for the Squamish Yacht Club during construction. They could potentially build some sort of temporary water access so that they could continue using the site during construction. That would require further consideration during the detailed design, just to make sure that, obviously, that it would need to be a safe area and accessible throughout construction, but it's something to consider. Okay, so I'm going to get into some of the transition challenges if we were to consider moving from a sheet pile to a sloped dyke in this area. Three options were investigated. The first is to match the alignment of the dyke crest. So in order to do that, there would have to be a fill slope extending out from the dyke crest, and you can see that that would result in an extensive amount of marine encroachment, which poses challenges. One is that when the water lot was dedicated to the district, a covenant was registered on that title that requires that the district maintain space for float homes, for the future or potential Syroco float homes to be relocated onto that water lot during dyke maintenance for the Syroco dyke. So if we fill out into that water lot, it removes that space. There's also permitting challenges in terms of, this is a navigable waterway, and so it would need to be, any water below the high, or sorry, any work below the high watermark needs to go through the navigation protection act, and so filling out into the water would be challenging. We'd lose the water lot. There would be impacts as well on the adjacent Syroco water lot. So overall, this option is just not considered feasible or recommended. The second is to match the toe of the slope of the Syroco, and so there would be a, the slope would extend up from there, and so it basically steps back the crest of the dyke at the Victoria Street End, and so that would result in abrupt drop off at this point, so there'd be railings and the trail would need to be realigned to the crest of the dyke further back. This would result in significant impacts on the Victoria Street End, which is under construction right now, so it would impact Syroco access, dyke ramp access, as well as having impacts on the future pedestrian bridge that would land at that site. So this option isn't recommended either. The third option is to continue the sheet pile past the Victoria Street End and to bring it back to the shoreline alignment, and then just transition to a sloped dyke at that point. So this eases the challenges at the Victoria Street End and facilitates the pedestrian bridge as well as the Syroco ramp and dock if that were to be placed on the district water lot, which is a concept that is shown here. Although I do note, it would push those transition challenges to the Hunea Park, so we'd still need to have some sort of transition at the park. So this is undesirable, but it is considered to be the only feasible option if we are to consider transitioning from a sheet pile to a slope dyke. So now I'll get into the main options that are being presented. The first is to use a sheet pile at the high watermark of the site, and again, this is using the high water, the average high watermark. The dyke footprint shown here, this includes dyke setbacks, so the actual footprint of the dyke might be smaller, but this is considered the area where no buildings could go within that area, so 15 meter wide. The second option is a slope dyke at the high watermark, and again, this is assuming we would use a sheet pile to bring it back to the shoreline and then transition to a slope dyke at that point, so that's why the dyke footprint becomes significantly wider at that point. We start incorporating the dyke slope in this area. And then the third option is to use a sheet pile at the Syroco dyke alignment, so roughly eight meters out from, beyond the existing high watermark. We did not consider a sloped dyke at the Syroco alignment. It just was not considered feasible because of the extensive marine encroachment. So getting into an analysis of these options, so option one, using a sheet pile at the high watermark. The key outcomes is that this would not encroach on existing buildings, so in the top left of Hunea Park here is the Squamish Yacht Paddling Club boat storage. They would not be impacted by the future dyke setbacks, so they could remain, as could the Hunea Park canoe shelter. This would allow for roughly 4,500 square meters of usable facility space for the future with a rough width of about 24 meters. This is considered to be quite large and would provide a lot of options for future community uses. It would facilitate the pedestrian bridge as well as a ramp and dock on the future water lot, or on the water lot. No major permitting hurdles would be anticipated with this. It's largely a continuation of the same type of dyke which has been approved through the Moreau and Syroco Developments. This is considered to be a moderate cost option. Moving on to option two, which is a sloped dyke at the high watermark. This would encroach on the paddling club facilities, so that facility would need to be relocated if this design option were to be considered. It results in 2,800 square meters of usable facility space with a width of about 14 meters, so quite limiting in terms of potential options for facilities on the park. And again, there would be significant transition challenges that I've mentioned already. This would potentially be a lower cost. There'd be less sheet piles and a little bit less fill as well, so there could be some minor cost savings.
Just on this point, is there a reason that your diagram doesn't show the dyke extending to the, I think it's the main street road end?
I mentioned it's a consideration to leave that for a future developer. That is, it could be funded through redevelopment of those parcels to the south, and then also could potentially provide a temporary water access for the Squamish Paddling Club during construction. It doesn't have to be that way. It could continue to the south end as well, just higher costs, potentially greater construction impacts. Okay, so moving on to the final option, which is the sheet pile at the Syroco alignment. So again, the dyke would not encroach on existing buildings. There'd be 5,800 square meters of usable facility space with a width of 32 meters, so this is the most flexible in terms of future land use options. It would result in significant marine encroachment and would be higher cost. There's more fill that would be required, and generally the ground conditions become more challenging as you move further into the channel. So I want to discuss habitat opportunities. One of the drawbacks of a sheet pile is, or perceived drawbacks, is the impacts on the marine life in the area. And so I want to highlight that there are options for improving the habitat in conjunction with the use of a sheet pile. So I'll present four options. The first is using reef balls. So this has been used in front of the Syroco Development. Basically, it's put in the water at the base of the sheet pile and then marine life can take hold. You can see the reef ball on the left here was pulled out of the water after some period of time, and you can see all the life that began to take hold on that versus what it looks like when it first goes in. So that is an option to incorporate in the water. This is called the Living Sea Wall. This is something that has been piloted in the Sydney Harbour. They're basically bolted onto a sheet pile and the texture provides an option for marine life to start to take hold there and liven it up a bit. There has been some good results used with that. This is just one option. There's lots of different types of products similar to this, but something too that could be considered. This is called an engineered habitat skirt. This is actually built at the Vancouver Convention Centre. It is quite costly, but has proven to be, it basically provides greater surface area that marine life can take hold and improve the habitat. And then finally, we could use something called a naturalized habitat skirt. So this is shown in the typical detail of the district's integrated flood hazard management plan. So it's basically putting rock and soil in front of the sheet pile in the intertidal zone, and you can put plant, special plantings in that area and basically provide some intertidal habitat in conjunction with a sheet pile. And now I want to talk about providing water access as part of the Dyken project. So the gangway ramps and dock, shown in pink, this is proposed by Syroco. Originally, I mentioned they had their water access shown in the Victoria Street End. That would provide their community amenity that's required, as well as providing access to their future float homes to the north. Their design concept has been revised with receiving and trying to coordinate with the pedestrian bridge coming from the waterfront landing site, so that's shown to the north. So basically, there would be, from the surface of the dyke, there would be a platform and some ramps that would extend down to the water, would go up and down with the tides, and it would lead out to a dock. So this would provide water access, potential boat launching for hand crafts. And also note that there is an option to construct future boat storage beyond that as part of the district or a community project. The ramp, there would be a ramp that would extend underneath the pedestrian bridge to the Syroco float homes at that point. This is also a potential temporary storage or mortgage point for boats that could wait if for some reason the pedestrian bridge was not raised up. This is showing the Falls Creek Paddling Centre. I note that they used a sloped dyke in this area, and they still have a ramp, and that's because basically even with a slope dyke, those slopes are too steep and they're sharp rocks, just not a safe, safe way to get boats down to the water. So even in conjunction with a slope dyke, it would be likely to build some sort of ramp access. They have floating boat storage on the water, large docks. I believe the cost estimate for this was that it was about a $3 million project just for the boat access, but it's obviously a very high-end facility. Something a bit more simple, this is the Fort Langley Canoe Club. So again, they have a slope dyke and a ramp access, a small dock, and they use that for launching canoes and other small boats. So there are options for getting down to the water using either a slope dyke or a sheet pile, and I think in both cases it would likely be through ramps and a dock. So in summary, from a cost perspective, using a sheet pile at the high watermark is considered sort of the baseline, moderate cost option. It includes sheet piles. There's a minimal amount of fill associated with that option because we're not filling out into the channel. Using a sloped dyke at the high watermark would be slightly lower cost. There's less fill and there's less sheet piles that would be associated with that. Sheet pile at the Syroco alignment would be the highest cost. It has sheet piles and a greater amount of fill. From an environmental perspective, using a sheet pile at the high watermark, it's minimal marine encroachment. Special intertidal habitat measures would be recommended in order to improve the habitat. Using a sloped dyke, there would be, again, at the high watermark would have minimal marine encroachment and it would provide good intertidal habitat. A sheet pile at the Syroco alignment, it's the most marine encroachment, so that has impacts, environmental impacts, and special intertidal measures would be recommended in association with that. From a future facility space perspective, sheet pile at the high watermark provides a good amount of space, 4,500 square meters at a rough width of 24 meters, provides a lot of flexibility. A slope dyke provides considerably less, only 14 meters wide and 2,800 square meters, and a sheet pile at the Syroco alignment would be 5,800 square meters, so very large amount of space, 32 meters wide, provide a great amount of flexibility. In terms of integration with adjacent shorelines, using a sheet pile at the high watermark would provide an easy transition, and it would facilitate the pedestrian bridge and the gangway and dock. Using a slope dyke would have significant transition challenges. A sheet pile at the Syroco alignment would provide an easy transition and facilitate pedestrian bridge, gangway and the dock. In terms of engagement, the district has engaged with the Squamish Nation, both through the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, in which the Squamish Nation did not express any opposition to the sheet pile as part of that project. We've also engaged with them in the initial design of, concept of this project, and the main feedback that they have provided is that they do want to see water access and potentially boat storage on the water at some point in the future. And staff are presenting to the Squamish Nation Capital Projects Committee November 13th tomorrow, so we'll hope to receive further feedback at that point. We've also engaged with the Squamish Paddling Club at an initial stage. Their feedback is they do have as well a strong desire to maintain water access through this project, and they would also like to remain on Hunea Park in the long term. So the next steps are to continue engagement with the community, with Squamish Nation and the Paddling Club, to incorporate feedback wherever possible and to report back to council for any items that have significant design impacts or cost implications. I want to mention the memorandum of understanding, which is also included in the report to council. So the intent of this is to collaborate on the design of the pedestrian bridge, the ramps and dock associated with the Syroco Development and the Seedyke. There's a lot of major infrastructure projects that are going to be happening at the Victoria Street End area over the course of the next three to four years, and so we all need to be working together to make sure that it all ties together well. And so the MOU basically describes an intent to work together to ensure that all the other parties' spatial and access needs are met in order to allow everyone to fulfill their respective obligations. So the district's obligations as part of this MOU are to design and construct the Seedyke at Hunea Park, to coordinate the review of the detailed design plans for all the respective infrastructure, and to allow the public dock and gangways on the water lot to encroach within the district's water lot, generally as shown here. And so we're seeking council's endorsement to enter into that MOU. So in summary, the sheet pile at the toe of slope, or at the high watermark is recommended. Staff feel this provides the optimal balance of usable land and water space as well as construction costs. We recommend to incorporate habitat measures as well as water access into that design. This is consistent with plans for the rest of the Mamcon Blind Channel as well as with IFHMP and OCP policy. It facilitates the pedestrian bridge, ramps and gangway and avoids awkward transitions, so this is the recommended option. In terms of scheduling, the fish window for House Sound is August 16th to January 31st of each year. It will take roughly one year to be construction ready by the time we get through procurement, design, permitting and tendering. It's estimated that in-water works would be roughly four months. So in order to fit within the 2020 fish window, the district needs to confirm a dyke concept and issue an RFP as soon as possible, or else it's possible that we'll risk slipping into the 2021 fish window for construction of the Seedyke. In terms of implementation items, it's recommended to continue engaging with the Squamish Nation, Squamish Paddling Club and the community to proceed into the detailed design and permitting with the sheet pile at the high watermark, to investigate and incorporate marine habitat opportunities in conjunction with this Seedyke design, to investigate and incorporate future water access into the design, and to enter into the MOU with Moses Kingswood and Moreau as described. So the recommendation is that the district of Squamish proceed with the detailed design and implementation items for the Honeak Park sea dike utilizing option one, sheet pile at high watermark as described in the report.
Thank you. You also got, uh, Council Rafe?
Thank you. Great presentation. I'm curious about the difference in the cost. If you have any idea, um, I guess first of all, just a ballpark of what, what block of sheet pile looks like in terms of cost, um, more or less continuing on, uh, with the style of Suraco. But the second thing is the difference between option one and option three to come out, um, and extend out a little bit. If you have any idea what the approximate cost difference is for those two options?
Uh, through the chair. So we have recently submitted a grant application for, um, uh, for constructing the sea dike, and it assumed that we would use a sheet pile at the high watermark. The cost estimate for that was just under five million dollars. That included dike surfacing, um, so, you know, pedestrian path, bike path, um, as well as lighting and street furniture. So it was sort of a, a completed, not just the dike, but also, um, finishing improvements. In terms of the cost difference between option one and option three, the key difference there is the additional fill. So, uh, basically eight meters wide at a depth of, uh, you know, the depth of fill is probably going to be, you know, ten meters. So, you know, I, I, I couldn't do a, a quick volume calculation cost estimate on the spot, but I would say that it's, you know, probably going to be half a million to a million dollars more, uh, in order to, to build that, just in terms of the additional fill required.
And would that also require the piling that, uh, like they did at Suraco? I understood that to be seismic stabilizing, but, um, they're putting buildings there as opposed to maybe just a, a grass and field.
Uh, through the chair. So that will require geotechnical investigation. You're right, um, there were timber densification piles constructed as part of the sea dike for Suraco, and I, I think a lot of people who live downtown would remember the extensive pounding all through last summer. Uh, they, they pounded fifteen hundred timber densification piles. That was for seismic, uh, requirements in, uh, in order to meet, um, provincial dike regulations. So it's quite likely that that will be possible, or sort of that that will be required as part of this, but it is subject to geotechnical investigation.
Thank you. The Council Anderson, uh, followed by Rayleigh.
Yes, uh, first I'd like to address the consultations, um, with the community groups. I had shared the Attachment Six Marine Habitat Opportunities, uh, diagram with Squamish Streamkeepers and Squamish Environment Society because of their ongoing, uh, involvement in projects in the Blind Channel and interest in this topic. And I'd just like to suggest further consultation with both of those two groups. They have been doing their own research on, uh, these types of, uh, options or, or, um, experiments. In fact, during February and March, they will be installing some nets to test for herring spawning, uh, at the small boat harbor. And what they're interested in is, uh, whether there's worthwhile investment in, in infrastructure that would be temporary, you remove it after the end of spawning season. So I suggest that as well as consultation with the Mount Chakai Warriors Canoe Club. During 2012, 2013, uh, the downtown BIA was at work with proposals for the site in connection with the district, uh, with the district. And the canoe club was interested in this scenario of hosting festivals, canoe racing festivals. We don't have the facilities at Squamish that they do elsewhere. They travel around, could have said northwest, attending these. And there may be some design, uh, um, just issues that may, they may bring forward. Contact persons would be Aggie Andrew and Shlomish Alan Jim. I have another question on another topic. That was sort of a suggestion about further consultation with those two groups.
Those Squamish Streamkeepers as well?
Squamish Streamkeepers and Squamish Environment Society. The Squamish Environment Society has been interested in generally in the sheet pile dike and what, what it means for habitat in the Mankun Blind Channel.
We'll do a round, uh, through Council Anderson, if you can have it. There's time, you can continue, uh, so, followed by Council Stowe.
I'm guessing I'm really curious about the design of the ramps down and how steep they are from a sheet pile perspective, um, so in terms of accessibility and also, um, their capacity. So you talked about on-water boat storage, but how much? So the paddling club is at capacity in their storage facility, so they could contemplate growth. And also I noticed that we've got the canoe shelter on one side of Honeak Park. We have paddling club on the other, and then the ramps will be towards the Suraco end. So can we move the paddling club? So I have all those sort of questions about how do we actually give people proper access? So, so those questions for the paddling club. Uh, curiosity along the lines of, um, Council Anderson's question for the nation tomorrow is what do they mean by water access? And what do they mean by boat storage? Because it could look very different from how we might perceive it for stand-up paddleboards and canoes. Might look quite different for a, a First Nations canoe. And finally, we talked, uh, last term about their potential, the potential for Honeak to be lifted and then putting something underneath it, whether that is a cultural center, museum, parking, but some other use. So does this RFP contemplate that? Or is that a decision for another time? Or do we need to make the two start simultaneously?
Okay, through, through the chairs. In terms of the, the first question was with respect to the slope of the, the ramps and the capacity of the dock. So you can see here that there is a switchback, um, in, in the ramps, and the, the intent of that is basically to provide a greater length for accommodating that elevation difference. So this, uh, would provide a suitable slope for, um, for most people to be able to walk during a low tide condition, like the lowest tide condition. If we were just to build a single ramp straight out into the water, it would probably be too steep. It wouldn't meet commercial access requirements, which technically we would not need to meet here, um, just as proposed. There's no commercial, uh, uses on the water. But there is a potential for having commercial, uh, associated with the float homes on Suraco. So I think the intent is to build this to meet accessibility requirements, um, and, and that is possible. Building in front of Honeak as well, because there is such a great, uh, width of space available, um, it's, it should be possible to accommodate, uh, proper, quite a reasonable slope. In terms of the capacity, um, they have a design concept that's been, uh, proposed as, uh, as part of the Suraco development. It's probably relatively modest in terms of, um, capacity from a, a, a greater community perspective. I think it is possible, this is just one water access. I think it's possible for the district to consider incorporating two, uh, water accesses. So we could have one at the north end and potentially have one at the south end as well. Uh, it's just a matter of costs. So it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars to build a, a simple water access ramp and dock, uh, but it's something that could be considered. So we could have one at the north end and one at the south end. We are applying for grants and, you know, we're hoping to, uh, to be successful with that, and, and if so, then that would help to cover the costs of that.
So just for clarity, Mr. Olson, Suraco has to cover the cost of that ramp on the north?
Correct.
And we could use any grant money we receive to put towards one on itself?
We would probably need to use district money because the grant applications that we've submitted so far were for the, the dyking, but, um, we could use district funds for, for water access.
I, um, just to follow up on the, uh, comment about Squamish Nation canoes are a little bit different from a surf ski as far as transport goes. Just in, you know, we'll, we'll hear more tomorrow, um, but in preliminary discussions with, with, um, council members from Squamish Nation, um, we, uh, put forth the idea that, you know, if, if, uh, if a large ceremonial canoe is, is built in the, in the canoe shed, that, uh, we could incorporate, uh, something like davits on the actual sheet pile wall to sort of lower the canoe down in place. Other than that, as far as our day-to-day use of, of large canoes, they're very interested in having on-water, um, uh, on-water storage. So that's likely to be part of that conversation.
And then the question about what goes underneath the dike tension?
Yes, so we haven't written the request or proposals yet, but I think that it would be written in such a way that it provides flexibility for future land uses and, um, in, using this dike footprint, it would be possible outside of that fifteen-meter footprint to do anything. So it could be an underground parking garage, structures, facilities, anything outside of basically the, the area indicated as dike footprint. So this is an area where it's sort of off limits in terms of facilities. Anything beyond that, uh, the district has entire flexibility as to what we want to do with that.
Council Stowe?
And thank you for the great presentation. Picking up on a few of my colleagues' comments, um, I'm curious if we have any sort of understanding of what marine biodiversity is currently like in that area of the Mankun Blind Channel to help inform kind of this decision around slope versus sheet pile?
Through the chair, I personally don't. Um, I, as part of the detailed design process, we would, uh, get an environmental consultant to, uh, do an investigation of the area and to, to help inform that, and that would also help inform design recommendations. All I can say is that as part of the Suraco development in the north, DFO did require reef balls as a compensation method, um, but beyond that, I, I couldn't speak to that.
Yeah, I would say, I, there's always this kind of sentiment that sloped dikes are better from the environmental perspective because it has more surface area, but you're still putting a whole bunch of fill that's going to destroy a whole bunch of habitat. And so it's, it's kind of a feel-good solution and not necessarily an actually good environmental solution. Um, and then in terms of the accessibility piece, I'm just curious, so for option two, I just want to clarify that the dike footprint, the additional space that's needed is all pushed onto land and it doesn't change the available water space? So it wouldn't affect kind of the way that the ramp would work? It wouldn't have to push that out at all?
That's correct. It, it basically was not considered as a feasible option to extend that slope further out into the water, just from a permitting perspective.
And then, um, last question is in terms of, uh, any commitments that we made in terms of long-term commitments to the existing tenants? Are they aware that we're still kind of in this process of trying to figure out what the parks are going to look like in the long term and that they might, the paddling club may have to move to the right or the left?
Through the chair, uh, the district's real estate department has had some discussions, uh, with Squamish Paddling Club. We're still in early days in terms of knowing when we are going to construct. We need to go through the whole design process, but we're, uh, in conversation with them and, uh, making sure that they're thinking about this and, uh, we'll be coordinating closely with them.
Thank you. Uh, that's Council Penningill, and I've got myself on the list, and then we'll go back to Council Anderson.
Just wondering if you can clarify what commitments, um, are already in place and then which ones we're thinking about adding with this MOU? Like why, for example, could we not say, well, there's a bunch of challenges here. Let's, uh, have the key to amenity dock in front of the Suraco property and, you know, we, we just don't have the capacity to provide storage for float homes during construction. And so, you know, if, if that means a few less float homes, so be it. So, you know, are those certain things we've signed off already and what, what parts are we going to add new canoes to ourselves?
Um, so at this stage, um, there, the district is under no commitment to, um, to need to provide space on our water lot, uh, for, for those docks and ramp. We viewed that as a potential benefit, uh, in terms of providing water access on, on our site and also it's, we viewed it as sort of a win-win, um, in that it would provide access to the future float homes without utilizing their water space and it would provide a water access, uh, at the district park. The district at this point is under no obligation to allow, uh, use of our water lot. So this MOU would, um, would commit the district to providing that.
I, I would just add to that. At the time of the DP, um, so the, the water lot in front of Suraco was to be, uh, a mixture of, uh, some floating commercial and, and some float homes. Um, and, um, at the time of the DP, the ramp down was completely in the street end. Two things changed to push us to this sort of compromise solution that, that we consider a win-win. Uh, one is that detailed design of, of the accessibility, make sure that, that there is accessibility, um, took up a lot of space, um, and reduced the amount of space for the, for the public dock, uh, that was a public amenity. Uh, the other really significant one is the pedestrian bridge was then added after the fact, um, to come over. And so in order to, um, get both, both amenities in, um, the pedestrian bridge and the, uh, the public access, um, this seemed like the best compromise.
Just some other thing, look, could we theoretically at least sort of say, well, the, the, uh, the bridge is going to land on our property, but we expect the public dock to be in front of the Suraco and, and maybe that provides us some, some way to manage a transition if we wanted a sloped dike or, or something like that? Is that sort of thinking an option just as far as we're already?
The way, uh, maybe Mr. Buckson can correct me if I'm wrong? Okay, great, perfect.
Clarify because I was present through the Suraco rezoning and development permit. So as Mr. Wogan said, the bridge sort of came right after the Suraco development, uh, got its approvals, and the commitment they made was to put in a public access in the street end right away. So, um, we could deny that, um, potential by putting the bridge through the middle and there being no space, but I think what we would end up with is another access into Suraco that's not publicly accessible.
Okay, um, the, uh, thank you. What, is there a difference in cost if we have to raise the dikes up further? Because, you know, we see climate changes accelerating faster than we expected, and so sheet piling versus sloped dike, does it matter one way or the other if we have to raise it in terms of cost?
Question. Um, so the figures that are used in the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, uh, show how the dike would be raised in the future, so I'll just pop back to those. In terms of the sheet pile, um, it's anticipated that a meter of sea level rise would occur by year 2100. And so at that point, uh, sheet piles are estimated to have about a hundred-year design life. So it's expected in a hundred years, we'd be replacing the sheet piles entirely, um, so basically putting in longer sheet piles, one meter higher, um, and filling behind that, and that's, that's shown in the figure here. This is, this is to accommodate two meters of sea level rise. So, um, if the sheet piles were in acceptable condition, uh, new sheets could be welded onto that or some sort of concrete capping could be, uh, put as well. This is shown as a wave return. So it would be relatively simple to, uh, to implement that. In terms of a sloped dike, uh, the slope from the water side would basically continue up, um, pushing the dike further landward, um, and basically placing fill behind that. So with the sheet pile, uh, minimal additional space would be required, um, and with the sloped dike, more space would be required. So that, that's kind of the, the key thing. In terms of cost, um, uh, it's difficult to say, uh, it's probably fairly comparable.
Thank you. Uh, and just if we, but with sheet pile here, where else along, um, this area would the public or might the public have access kind of, you know, direct shoreline access right to the water where they could sit on some rocks and put their toes in the water?
Go to the... So this is the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. Sheet pile is basically recommended from the Highway ninety-nine bridge all along the banks of the Mankun Blind Channel.
On the west side?
On the west side, yes. Uh, on the east side, it's, um, green shores principles are being applied as part of the waterfront landing in the Scott Crescent, uh, Kingswood Development. Uh, so on the other side of the water, that would be possible. There will be opportunities as well as part of the oceanfront development. So in particular on the west side of that site, so a, a sheet pile is, uh, recommended to be continued along the east side of the oceanfront lands all the way down. But on the west side, green shores principles would be applied, so, uh, sort of Catamaras slough. So sort of Catamool Slough area as well as the oceanfront park would provide an ideal access. There's also the boat ramp that is existing right now at the Vancouver Street End. That is likely to remain. We've talked about detailed design considerations for that in terms of having something called the flood break. So it's sort of a low point in the dike. And then when water rises, the wall raises up to meet it. So that would provide a continued upgrade access to the water at that point.
I have myself on the list, but I've been, my concerns have been addressed. So first, we'll move back to Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. The indentation in the shoreline is addressed in the report in that you are recommending that or advising that there's extra cost to take into account such an indentation of a straight line for the dike, for the dike, from a cost point of view. That indentation was formerly used as the bullpen for the log dump. And before that though, it was the mouth of the Catamool Slough. It is in fact a natural indentation. The slough connected and the southern it was an island. I don't know what consideration that is, but it is a windy area. And for, if we're talking about paddling sports, small vessels, that wind protection may be an interesting factor to consider. And we don't know how the facilities will evolve or the use of this waterfront will evolve. But I just put it to you that I'd like to see consideration of retaining that indentation, at least for wind protection purposes. If we're out there in the water, from my own experience, it can be a very windy area and that we're going to lose the beach. We will not have the beach configuration now under a sheet pile diking scenario, which I support. But nonetheless, I wonder if we could give that some consideration and that may include assessing the costs of it. Further, I wondered if I could have you refer to this slide, sheet pile water access option. It's attachment five. Yes. So in blue, we have highlighted future boat storage or other water-based structures. And you're assuming for our purposes now that it's not going to be a part of the MOU arrangement with Soraco and the other partner. So going back to our experience in planning for this waterfront back in 2012, 2013 with community groups, there were visits to the Fort Langley Canoe Club. And there's immediate interest from multiple parties, including commercial interests in facilities, including at this site. We don't know how that's going to evolve, but clearly we have got a marine strategy action plan underway that is incomplete as regards finalizing what the picture of needs and demands is going to look like and solutions for them. So my question really is, how should we be treating that future plans there? Should it be included in the MOU? Or what design considerations are we going to have piling there? What does that mean for future float home maintenance storage in that area? So in summary, we are going to be seeing demand for float dock facilities here. And there may be other options for them on the site, maybe that indentation or further down the other end. We maybe have all of the above. But I didn't see reference to the marine action strategy in the report. So my question is, we are going to see demand and need for float facilities for small craft? How should we be planning for them at this stage?
Through the chair, that's an excellent question. We've put a little bit of thought into that at this point. We haven't gone down the road of considering it in detail. I think that the dock arrangement that's shown here would provide potential for adding onto that in the future if that's desired. It's, a lot of these ramps and dock type of facilities can be segmental and built in phases with flexibility. And we would need to consider at that time, when we're looking at boat storage or anything, how that would integrate. I don't think it is necessary to incorporate that into the MOU for that reason because I think there is that flexibility with the design here. But it is something that we'll need to look at in further detail as part of the design process and as we continue coordinating with Soraco and with Bosa Kingswood.
And we can then leave open the option of additional pilings, that type of structure?
Yeah, I guess in answer to that through the chair, the MOU, just for clarity, is an MOU between the district and two different developers. What, and that's allowing some level of encroachment on the water lot in order to get around the conflict of the two different street end designs that we've approved through the DP process and to facilitate accessibility of that ramp. What we wouldn't, it wouldn't be to our advantage to over-constrain ourselves on our water lot with our public funds in an MOU with developers essentially. So I think that we're intentionally leaving that area, that blue area, very open so that we can, through consultation with stakeholders and council and with Squamish Nation, design that area in whatever way works best for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mayor Elliott, followed by Counselor Reese.
I think one of the appeals of a sloping dike rather than sheet piles that people feel they would have water access or more of a beach kind of feel. But what would be the slope of this dike and would people be able to walk down it with something?
Great question.
In their arms and then get into the water? Because I see a lot of sheet pile or riprap and, anyway, I'm just curious because I, is it true beach access or is it really a type?
Through the chair, so if we were to use a typical dike geometry, that's a two-to-one slope. And so just for reference of that, that would be twice as steep as the chief trail. So it's, it would be a 50% grade. It's far too steep for the average person to walk down with a boat. And it would also be capped with large, sharp rock. So that's why I've provided these two examples here where they actually do have riprap slopes. But it's still not a suitable water access to walk down those slopes. And so they've still incorporated these ramps in conjunction with that. I think there has been sort of a preconception that a sloped dike would provide a suitable water access. And that is possible if you have a large area and you can flatten that slope down to maybe a one-in-12 slope or something like that and then cap it with sand. You know, that's where you, if we were to consider that though, it would require extensive encroachment into the Mammcom Blind Channel. That fill slope would extend almost to the other side of the Blind Channel or it would extend all the way past Rogers Lane. So there's just, we don't have the space there to accommodate a flat slope that would provide suitable water access. So even with a sloped dike, I think it will be required to have some kind of ramp facility.
And I would just add that we're looking at this also in the context of having the oceanfront and waterfront parks installed in the coming years as well. So it's part of that whole picture of water access and places to put toes in the water.
Thank you. Counselor Reese?
Yeah, I'm just sort of at the comment point.
We'll come back to you. Thank you. I'm curious about cost differences between the natural slope at the base of sheet pile as compared to the reef ball. Would there be significant differences in those costs or are they very similar?
Through the chair, reef balls, I think in general are quite inexpensive. There's a very low cost associated with that. A naturalized habitat skirt shown in the bottom right here, that would have a higher cost. You know, it'd be built, filled along the entire extent of our 200-meter-long waterfront. So I think there would be more cost associated with that. I don't think it's a huge cost. But it would be more expensive, probably a couple hundred thousand, a few hundred thousand dollars versus reef balls, which are maybe $50,000 to build the whole waterfront.
Follow-up if you would. And if we went with the reef ball option, is the, would the vision be that the entire sheet pile area would have these? Or could we look at some sections, some space where there are no reef balls? Are those options?
Through the chair, so it will partly be dependent on DFO permitting. So they did require reef balls as part of the Soraco development. Certainly it could be part of the discussion with them during the permitting process as to what their requirements would be. And if there are areas where we're anticipating boat use and where there could be a conflict, we could have a discussion about, you know, potentially leaving areas without them. But we just haven't gotten to that stage yet.
Thank you. Counselor, let's go through the rest of our questions. What, Counselor Reese?
So thank you. So in previous council discussions, I've gone back and we've had a bit of history about this. The issue first came up with the development permit application for the Moreau, which is now called the Mistral. And it had one in 2008 or something and then the economy dropped. It didn't go ahead. The DP lapsed and they came back in, I think it was around 2011 for development permit. And what happened in the meantime is the inspector of dikes had raised the sea, the dike level by a meter, which pushed, when you start going up and then you start going out, pushed their development back and started crunching in the Rogers Lane. And also, when you started to look at where the tides were and so forth, if you started extending that dike out into the Blind Channel, it essentially sterilized their water lot and they wanted to make commercial use of their water lot. So that's why this whole vertical solution thing started. And in discussions we had at that time, it's obviously sort of a harsher thing rather than a softer edge. But my understanding of the history of it is that the Blind Channel, that side of the Blind Channel was contemplated in the estuary management plan to be developed. And it's compensated for by things like the wildlife management area and so forth. So it was never intended to be the soft edge. In fact, from my understanding, the catamol turning into a soft edge on the side of the oceanfront is an additional benefit to the estuary management area that was not by itself contemplated as being a soft edge. So I personally didn't have any problem with the vertical solution. In fact, it seemed the only thing possible because of such a squeeze in the space and because you didn't want to lose the use of the water lots. The one thing that's different that we have to keep in mind because it does make a difference farther down is that we have, we own the water lot, which is not usual, but it happens. Most of them are leases. And for example, where the Yoclo is, that's a lease from the Crown, from the province. So the developer of the upland lands next to the water, the Yoclo docks, for example, will not have the option of going out into the channel because they'd be going onto somebody else's land. So when they put their edge in, it will more or less just have to be along more or less the high-water mark. But we have the option. And so at this point, I'm thinking of, there's a whole bunch of possibilities in my mind and I've seen them in different marinas all around, all over the place. And so I'm trying to keep options open. And so if you can go back to the slide that just had the picture with the little building in the water. So for example, without making this too long a discussion, one of the things that's been discussed in the community kind of offline is the thought of having a building out there, but not floating, but on a pier. And you could just come straight out from whatever you're, from a vertical seawall with some pilings and just a pier and have a building relatively inexpensively. Actually, what I've been told by builders is that's a cheaper foundation than trying to put one on land. And you could build a building on it for some community use, whatever it might be. Restaurant, boat storage, or whatever. So that's an option. We're not talking about that today, but just to keep those types of options in mind. And I've watched people on that shore. There was nobody swimming in it that I saw this year. It wasn't quite warm enough, but the water there is cold and so it's not an active beach. It's not like Spanish ranks or something in Vancouver. The water access, from my perspective, is primarily paddlers and canoes, et cetera. And that is very easily done with ramps, from my observation. You could have one that just goes right along the whole waterfront, for example, parallel to the dike. And a ramp down, you could have more than one ramp down, just from little piers out. So there's all kinds of options that would accommodate small craft. We're not talking marinas, but small craft like paddlers and canoes and dragon boats and things like that that could just stay in the water there. And whether you have to have a system to bring them up and down if they're bigger, maybe not. Maybe you only do it seasonally anyway. So just get a crane through once a year sort of thing. So there's different options for that. So I think from my perspective, the sheet pile, there's just no debate about the sheet pile versus the slope, just because of the constraints. The second question though for me is the, whether we go along the high-water mark or whether we go along the same line as the Soraco. And for about $500,000, give or take, and when you think about it, you're really not building any more dike. It's probably the same linear distance. It's just a question of whether you pull it in or out. And so it's primarily a fill cost and maybe some piling cost. But I think at that particular point, the land area is more valuable than the water area. And we could afford to come a little bit out into our water lot to gain land. Because I think there are a whole bunch of other options for the land. And we don't have to get into that today. But keeping options open, and one of them has been parking and some kind of structure underneath and raise the park. Those are, maybe that works, maybe it doesn't work. But to keep the options open for all the things we want to do there and even just the surface area of the park, I think it's worthwhile considering taking it out. We only get one shot at this. And once it's built, we're not going to come back later, I don't think, and extend it out another eight meters. So I would be inclined to go and bite the bullet and push it out now and gain the land. Because I think that will in the long run be more valuable for us. The buildings and so forth that are on there right now are not a consideration in my decision. Not that they'll disappear, but that they're movable. When we talked to the paddlers about it, the last term or the term before, they understood that the final design of the dock of the park is not complete and hasn't been started. And so that building is movable. The same with the canoe ship. That was two terms ago. It was on that committee. That was put there and didn't know exactly where it's going to finally end up. Once again, it's a movable building. So I don't think we have to worry about that kind of stuff. For me, it's just kind of keeping the options open and getting the most space. And so I would argue for option three at this point.
Thank you. We've run out of time and we have run over already for this topic, which is the first in very staff day. So I will get through my speaker's list here. I've got Counselor Stoner, French, Penningill, followed by Mayor Elliott. But we do have staff in front of us looking for a recommendation on this.
To put it on the table, I'll move option three.
Option three was the,
Sheet pile and its farther out.
Sheet pile further out was option three. Does that have a second?
I will move option one and the staff recommendations. I will speak to it. So excited to see this move forward. I am in favor first and foremost of trying to maintain as much flexibility as possible for a home maintenance park going in the future with this RFP. But to me, I equally value the water space as well as the land space. And I think that as we move, if we aim to move the sheet pile out to match with the Soraco, one, we lose a fair bit of water space to some degree. And then also we're just extending, we're also infilling a whole bunch of water space that we just don't need to do from the environmental sector. So I just don't see that there's necessarily the value there when we can actually capitalize on the water space, which is a fairly limited asset that we have as a municipality. Also looking to the left of that diagram, I'm not too sure what the owners upwards would do. But if they, Counselor Reese, as we just spoke to, aren't actually able to move into that eight-year high-water mark as well and they're, because they're on a lease lot, then we're just kind of pushing that upward transition further aside. then we're just kind of pushing that upward transition further, further side. The other pieces that I think are really, really critical, which get more challenging if we push out beyond the high-water mark, is the accessibility of the ramp, because you're just working with less space, so you end up with more churns, and that becomes harder if you're in a wheelchair. And then my other request would be that, once you get into the detailed design, that habitat opportunities come back to council for consideration, considering there's a decision point that I'd like to be part of.
Thank you. Counselor French.
I agree with everything that Counselor Stoner has said, and I'm also quite conscious of the costs associated with this. For me, the costs associated with this option are ideal, and anything that we could do to bring those costs down any further, I think, would be favorable from our taxpayers' perspective.
Counselor Penningill.
Yes, so just for clarity, I don't have a particular preference, a strong preference for one over the other at this point. I do understand that we weren't talking about a beach or anything at this point, it's that some people like to sit on those big rocks and just kind of be near the water, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's the best solution here. I guess, you know, it sounds to me like there's some really important questions still with this conversation and so on and feedback, so I guess I'm a bit hesitant to pick a particular option without hearing a bit more on some of those discussions. I do, in terms of the, just while I'm getting all the comments out, in terms of the MOU, I am really hesitant to put anything in there, and I don't think there is at this point, but that assumes we will be storing float homes or that we have a particular idea of what float homes should be or will be, just, you know, not ready to make commitments there yet, especially as we're learning about how we adjust our planning with climate considerations. So, I'm going to listen to the rest of my colleagues. At this point, I'm not prepared to support this, just because I feel like I need a little more information, I don't actually have any specific against this, but I'd just need more info.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
Happy to support the motion. For me, how we activate the water space is a higher priority right now, which is why I want to follow the high-water mark. And I think going forward, how we think about that water space and the access to it is that we don't just, no offense, come at it from an engineering perspective, but from a public realm perspective and a human perspective. So, allowing space for people to sit and put their feet in the water where they won't be interrupted by people landing boats or trying to put boats in the water. And this vibrancy of allowing it to be a place where we could potentially support tournaments around dragon boat racing, that sort of thing, lessons for kids. And so, leaving space for a ramp that, you know, allows young people to carry a boat down or older people. So, that whole issue of accessibility is really important to me. So, look forward to the feedback you'll get from the nation. They'll help us make this project better, for sure, but happy to support the recommendation.
Good service. I'm happy to support option one. However, I do not actually see a lot of risk to constraining options with option three, as Counselor Reese has articulated. But I'm going to go for option one, because I would prefer to have seen further work done, completed on the marine action strategy before we constrain our options on the water. In particular, item 4.1.1, Plan four and develop appropriate marine and marine-related infrastructure amenities and facilities in consideration of future and current needs. I do not wish to have another discussion else on waterfront planning elsewhere without having that work done. We really do need to address it, and that's the only thing I might just make regarding the presentation today, I think has been excellent, but I would have liked to have seen more attention to the status of the marine action strategy in the context of the marine action strategy. I'd also put option one.
Thank you. And I'll just make some quick comments, and we'll call the vote. I'm happy with option one, the sheet pile. I see that if we did have more space, that water lot is just a strange shape to push out into on the, I guess is the north end where it's narrowest. I think that we're really constrained our options there if we were to go away with option three, or even some hybrid where it stepped back a little bit, because it's not, that water lot, so it's not an easy shape to work with. So, I'm happy to support option one, and look forward to further feedback from, not particularly from the nation of shores tomorrow, but I'll be supporting option one. So, with that, I call a question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Opposed? Counselor Reese and Penningill.
Thank you.
Good for each. We're going to move on to item two on our list. And if you can keep the questions concise and restated twinkle on this topic, we will be able to get back on time schedule.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Matt Gunn. I'm a planner here at the District of Squamish. Today, I am here to present a component of the 2020 zoning bylaw update, the university subarea zoning. I do want to highlight that we do have some stakeholders in the audience from the university subarea, and if council at some point wants to reach out to them, they are available to discuss any elements. They have not indicated that they necessarily want to speak or have something they would like to present, but they are available if there are questions. Staff today are seeking council direction regarding updates to zoning in the Sea to Sky University Subarea, including approaches to identifying a development vision, allocating housing units, and addressing miscellaneous commercial and residential zoning challenges. I'd like to begin with a background discussion for context. The original zones applied to the university subarea were the UC-1 zone, which is the campus, the light hatching there, and the UH-1 zone, which is university housing, the dark pink there. Later, the P-5 zone was added in 2018 to secure the possibility of a school site. In the current zoning bylaw, 1,500 student and faculty housing units are allocated to the university campus or UC-1 zone. This reflects the subarea plan and the Quest University expectation, which includes a maximum student population of 1,200 students and up to 300 on-campus faculty housing units. Outside of the campus land, the UH-1 zone specifies a maximum of 960 dwelling units in the UH-1 area. These are not allocated to specific parcels but are rather available in a first-past-the-post scenario across several parcels with several owners. The bylaw does not specify where in the zone those units should be located or what housing form they should be. By not specifying where the units go, the zoning has provided significant flexibility to the original owners. That flexible approach was likely intended to facilitate development opportunities early on in the development of the university. Of the 960 permitted units in the UH-1 zone, 510 have already been allocated or built through approved subdivisions construction and private covenants. The remaining 450 units in the UH-1 zone can be used anywhere in the four undeveloped areas, which are parcel A, lot 12, and the flexlands A and B. The flexland A and B are on-campus, they're owned by the university. Parcel A and lot 12 are owned by foundations. These, as I said, these represent separate parcels with different owners. Because the use of the 450 units is first-past-the-post, it is challenging to appropriately plan development from the district perspective. Unplanned decision-making regarding development could fail to deliver some community benefits that are expected under the subarea plan and could lead to inappropriate municipal infrastructure. In addition, it is difficult to ensure that the vision articulated in the OCP and the subarea plan is achieved without some level of control over allocation of density. Elements of the vision include a vibrant neighborhood, a variety of housing forms, a high proportion of multi-unit dwellings, a substantial neighborhood park, and a commercial node. And finally, the district is not able to consider changes to density to address evolving community needs, given the current zoning setup. So, staff consider the current zoning undesirable and recommend the situation be improved by allocating the units to specific parcels. Allocating the units should be informed by a development vision. The vision could be generated in a few different ways. There could be a comprehensive subarea plan update, there's a high-level development potential analysis, or a detailed development potential analysis, and we're going to talk about those three here briefly. The first approach, a comprehensive subarea planning update, would require considerable staff time and resources and is not a near-term project. Delaying zoning amendments for a subarea plan update does increase the likelihood of development not meeting OCP objectives. A second approach is to use a high-level development potential analysis, which staff have completed. The analysis is based on planning principles in the existing subarea plan and OCP. These principles include locating higher density near community amenities, directing density to neighborhood nodes and transit corridors, and consideration of topographical constraints. Given this analysis, there is strong support for density at flexland B. The land is close to amenities in the campus area. It's contiguous with a neighborhood node which is identified in the star that was identified in the OCP, and it is located at the endpoint of our core transit network. Townhouse development or open space would be appropriate at the east end adjacent to single-unit development to create a transition. Apartments with commercial upgrade would be more appropriate at the west end near Health and Way and the neighborhood node, and a mix of housing forms could be incorporated in the flexlands B. Staff suggest the area could comfortably support 200 to 400-plus units, depending on the mix of unit types. This would direct density to land with the closest proximity to an existing road network, water servicing, and sewer servicing in order to maximize efficiency of that infrastructure. The density would also support the commercial node and our transit network. The university flexlands A share some of these characteristics, but due to constraints, there are limited opportunities for density. Lot 12 is not appropriate for allocating units at this time due to limited access. Parcel A offers development opportunities, but it is difficult to assess with current information, given topography and environmental considerations. Density on parcel A is consistent with the subarea plan and the OCP, and depending on the housing form, it is assumed that 450 units could be accommodated on parcel A due to its size. A third option is a detailed development potential analysis. In order to determine a precise and more accurate analysis of development potential of all the UH-1 lands, additional information, including studies of environmental values and topography, would be required. Staff have identified preliminary costs for this work, which is just over $28,000. Staff believe the analysis would indicate a development capacity significantly beyond the permitted 960 units, given upgrades are completed to servicing infrastructure. Given resourcing requirements, time implications, and cost, staff propose basing allocation use on approach to a high-level development potential analysis for the zoning bylaw update. A little bit of a poor animation there on the side, but anyway, so the proposed approach that we'd like is that staff use the approach to the high-level development potential analysis. I'd like to highlight that regardless of this approach or the approach used, staff do believe that there is strong rationale for supporting increased density in the university area beyond what is established in the university subarea plan. Without a detailed analysis, it's impossible to determine what the appropriate ultimate density should be, and furthermore, it's not considered appropriate by staff to add that density beyond the current thresholds that are set in the subareas plan as part of the 2020 zoning bylaw update. Additional density would best be added through a subarea plan update and a development-led rezoning process, allowing discussion with broad range of issues. We could consider housing diversity, affordable housing, open space, and amenity contributions. And as such, any clarification of the housing allocation in the 2020 zoning bylaw update should remain within that threshold that's currently established in the subarea plan and the zoning bylaw. So, if a high-level development potential analysis is considered appropriate to inform zoning amendments, there are three approaches that could be used to determine unit allocation. Option one is to allocate units according to the existing expectations based on declared original intent. This would allocate 450 units to parcel A and reflects what some of the stakeholders in the area feel was the original intent of the zoning and the subarea plan. So, it aligns with some, with the expectations of some of the landowners, primarily the representatives of parcel A and lot 12, the foundations that were involved in establishing Quest. However, it does lack some planning rationale and is not well-aligned with the subarea plan. A second option for allocation is to allocate units according to proximity to infrastructure in the subarea plan. This would likely result in allocating remaining units to university flexlands B. It would maximize infrastructure, it would support the neighborhood node and our transit system. However, it would not align with some stakeholder expectations. And a third allocation option is to allocate the remaining 400 dwelling units under current zoning to parcel A and to reassign 250 of the 300 faculty housing units in the UC-1 zone to dwelling units in the UH-1 zone on flexlands B. This option could achieve current subarea and OCP goals, such as the commercial node, a variety of housing forms, and support for transit. It also addresses the stated expectations for some of the stakeholders. One drawback of this option is that would forego some future employee housing opportunities. optionally, council could consider requirements in flexland D in order to achieve benefits associated with additional density in the area. This could include mandating a specific density and/or a mix of housing forms for development in that area. Given the available options, staff propose allocating 450 dwelling units to parcel A and reassigning 250 dwelling units from student faculty housing to dwelling units in the UH-1 zone. And then finally, there are some additional zoning amendments that have been proposed in the zoning bylaw update for the university, and there are a few that staff have considered and have not included in this discussion because they've been determined to not be relevant, but there are five here that I want to go over at a high level. Staff propose to replace the undefined term "university campus commercial" with the defined term "neighborhood commercial" to support liquor primary as a contribution to commercial requirements, to remove caps on commercial space and to allow the use throughout the UH-1 zone. Currently, there is no maximum floor area. There's no maximum floor area ratio for student and faculty housing. Staff propose establishing a maximum floor area ratio of 2.0 that is in line with the lower-density end of downtown projects, which is double the current density in the RM3 zone. Currently, there are no maximum floor area ratios for residential. Staff propose townhouse and apartment maximums in line with the RM2 and RM3 zone. Single-unit dwellings are proposed to be slightly higher floor area ratio with RS1 maximums with a bonus structure that incentivizes secondary suites. Staff propose to clarify minimum lot dimensions for single and two-unit dwellings in the UH-1 area to align with original intentions. The current language is a bit ambiguous. And finally, current regulations for common usable open space do not apply to the UH-1 apartment or townhouse development, and staff propose to include the UH-1 zone in the areas that usable open space requirements apply to. Staff are seeking council feedback on these proposals and direction to include these items in the zoning bylaw update.
Thank you. Two questions. So, if you can go back to your, the one that had the numbers on it.
Which numbers?
Dollar numbers.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to be clear about the proposed approach. So, unless I missed something, so the detailed development is reflected with the $28,200 cost. Your recommendation is a high-level development potential?
Yeah.
And I missed the rationale for not going into the detail.
Because of the cost associated with it.
Because of the cost.
There is, yeah, the $30,000 isn't something that we've allocated at this point. If, and also, staff feel that we can achieve the intention of securing some of the opportunities that the subarea plan would be able to take advantage of or outline the vision by going with a high-level development analysis. Essentially, we've looked at our planning principles and said, okay, here's some fairly high-level decisions we can make to figure out where unit allocation should go. If council wants to get really specific and find out exactly how many units could go where, we could do that analysis, but at this point, we don't know that spending that additional money is requirement, that we have an option to figure out how to allocate in lieu of spending that money.
And just to add to that, if I may, to each of, most of that analysis, we focus on parcel A, because we know that the flexlands, especially the flexlands B, are fairly encumbered in lot 12, is sort of limited with access. So, you know, if there is a potential for higher density, maybe it's better if it gets funded through a development application. So, you know, if there is a potential for higher density, maybe it's better if it gets funded through a development application.
Actually, one more point to that. At this point, because we don't feel it's appropriate to add that additional density beyond what the current threshold stipulates, that really, as Yona said, to have that done as part of rezoning application makes more sense because at that point, that additional density could be added where there's a discussion around amenities and other elements that we want to achieve that align with OCP goals. We could identify, you could put 900 units in parcel A at this point, but it might not make sense to rezone for that at this point.
My second question was with respect to those 450 units. Is there any commitment at the moment as to what type of units they are, single family versus multifamily, for example?
Through you chair. No, the zoning is so flexible that all of the unit types are available for that development except that we have, a single unit used to be a development option or a housing for an option in these lands. And in one of the previous zoning by law updates, that was removed because the proportion of single unit dwellings was already fairly high compared to what the vision of the subarea plan outlined. So we've removed single unit, but all other options are available to developers and they could make a choice based on what their ambitions were. And that is one of the issues that we see in the current zoning, that that level of flexibility does not allow the district to provide direction on how they want to see those land uses develop and achieve some of the goals we have for a variety of housing forms and density.
Thank you.
So I'm curious, do you have any sense of how many of the 1,500 student or faculty units have been built out? So just going back to the component of changing the bar for the future building, how many of them?
How many? I'll have the, so I'll have the number slightly, 400? Yeah, okay. So 400 of the student units have been built out. The remaining number is the ultimate original intent of the size of the university student population. And so that's, you know, we want to maintain that opportunity for the university. We don't want to change that.
And then I'm curious, were any amendments made to the subarea plan during OCP 2040?
Through you chair, there were some minor amendments to align the, I'm trying to remember what they were. They were fairly minor. And I know, I know, following the OCP, we implemented some zoning to secure the park site. And so we had to make some minor amendments to the OCP to align that zoning change because the zoning can't be changed without being in line with the OCP, but that was the only piece. Certainly, and the OCP does have policy that says we should look at that subarea plan and redo that vision, update it. But we have not engaged in that as a great planning yet. It's a fairly large process and hasn't been tackled.
So I'm just curious, when I look at option three, but based from kind of the planning principles, especially of compact complete communities, option three suggests moving the majority of the units out to parcel A as opposed to keeping them closer to the existing infrastructure. Can you speak to why that would be a preferable option at all?
Yeah. So there are a couple of things there. One, the, in option three, we do have a way to move units to parcel A. So we were able to load a fair number of those units into that area, 250. If we were to take units from the larger area, the parcel A area, that would then be misaligned with the subarea plan. There is certainly in the subarea plan reflection of interest to have some density in the core, but also to have some development across that parcel A. So it's trying to balance those, it was also trying to balance stakeholder expectations. And then the ultimately staff's perspective is there's probably room for more density on, in both of these areas, the Flexlands B and the parcel A. And but the intention is that by establishing it this way, we certainly identify that we want density in both these areas, but potentially direct or set up a situation where a rezoning process could be followed for both those areas. And that can trigger some discussion around achieving some of the other goals in the subarea plan.
So can I just clarify on that? Because it says that parcel A, the 450 dwelling units would go to parcel A and then reassign 250 units would go to the Flexlands.
That's correct.
Increasing the density further away in option three.
Yeah, that's a reflection of the size of that area, that there is a very large amount of space across that parcel A. Another option is to move more of those, yeah, that would be a possibility to push those those units from parcel A down to the Flexlands. There are some downsides to that. And one that we have tried to work with through this whole process is to try and accommodate the stakeholder expectations and interests. And so that would be an option, but it would come at a severe misalignment with some expectations.
Counsel Penningill. So, and I apologize, I'm sure I've asked and been answered this, but can't hold on to it. You know, I understand we have quite a bit of discretion to rezone, as long as we're not rezoning to park. And we had a zoning here. Developers had some time to make use of that and haven't thus far to a large degree. So is there anything beyond, or is there anything requiring us to provide at least 450? Or could we, somewhat like we've done in the business park, remove some uses or change the zoning a bit just to give us some time to wrap our heads around all of this and understanding the infrastructure costs and, you know, do more detailed planning and so on? Or do we have a commitment over and above to keep a bare minimum of 450 units in this whole area?
You chair. No, we do have discretion to change the zoning and the unit allocation. Sorry, council does have the discretion to change the unit allocation and the ultimate density at their discretion.
Do we know from what's going on in the lower mainland, what sort of density is required to support transit? This being the end of a transit run and we can't justify good transit up there yet. So do we have sort of a sense of how many people need to be living up there?
Yeah, through you chair. So I don't have that off the top of my head and have not investigated that piece. I think that that's a really good point. It would be fantastic to have more information along that for development throughout the transit, the core transit network. Yeah, at this point, I can't say that I have that information, but I think it'd be very worthwhile to.
Possible that colleagues in the lower mainland have a sense of that? Obviously, they're promoting density around transit hubs.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great question.
I would love to find that out. In terms of, in terms of that reallocation of 250, that's just a minimum. Anybody could rezone for those Flex B lands. This is related to my transit question because I actually think that's a low density and we really want to support transit up in that neighborhood. And so is that correct? That's a.
Yeah. Through you chair. Yeah. Depending on what style of housing form were to go in there. Yeah, certainly there is room for increased density beyond a 250. And yes, the intention would be to place, to allocate that housing. But ultimately, just, actually, what would be the best is as part of the OCP or as part of the rezoning process, to probably create some language in the OCP that provided some support for higher density. And yes, that would ultimately be possible through a rezoning process. That would not preclude an application to increase that density.
We were talking about using the neighborhood hub and we're talking about amenities. There is an independent school up there. Are they contemplated in, whose land are they sitting on? Are they contemplated in this high level planning exercise? Are there any other areas where we would put commercial or is it just in that node? So I'm just trying to figure out how you see, I suppose, the connection with area A and how it connects into this whole neighborhood.
Yeah. Through you chair. So yes, there is Coast Mountain Academy located currently on the Flexland B. If, I know that as part of consideration to development there, they may have to move. I think that's something that if you wanted more detail on that, it'd be worthwhile speaking to the university. We could have them answer that question. But I think there has been consideration of where they might end up. In terms of the zoning, there is zoning, the zoning detriment for school throughout the area. So they are permitted in that area. Where they might land, I think that's going to be a, the result of, you know, consideration by the university in terms of what land they have available in their, in their campus, if there might be space there. Or if they may, sorry, Coast Mountain Academy may look for other options in the university subarea. But I don't have an answer for where they might land as part of this. It is possible that the development on Flexlands B could displace their campus site and they would be required to look elsewhere for a location of land. And in terms of the commercial space, we have had inquiries from other existing locations or people who are doing development on this Quest subarea. And those inquiries have reflected interest in incorporating some commercial into a variety of locations. The Health and Way has been identified in the subarea plan as the place to put a commercial node. And so we've created zoning to really support that in fact mandate it. But one of the intentions of the miscellaneous zoning amendments is to remove the restriction on having commercial from other parts of the subarea because with the intention of having much higher density, more apartments and more density in smaller locations, the idea of having mixed uses possible throughout that area is appealing. And so removing the restriction right now, there's only a few places where it can, where those commercial areas could land. And we want to allow it to show up in more places because we don't see the downside of having those services available to people in the community.
Last question. Is there a density that is aligned with affording the pipes in the ground, the roads, the infrastructure? Like I look at what is the build up there right now, which is incredibly expensive for us to maintain from an infrastructure perspective. And there's a few things I regret from last term, but not getting on top of this last term is definitely one of them. And now if we had to do it all over again and you look at parcel A and there's steep slopes and it's, there's no sort of simple connectivity into the university. Like again, why would we put housing up there? It just, unless it was extremely dense and we could justify the cost. Like if we had to start again, would we designate that as a, as a good place to put an neighborhood?
If I could, so the last question is, I think if we start again, our current practice would be to do the detailed assessment of the topography, the environmental constraints and let's see what makes sense in terms of density and the long term cost of putting that infrastructure in. But that, you know, that wasn't the case back when the university came about.
Through you chair. Yeah, one part of your question there was, the first part was about the cost or the density we would want to have the infrastructure supported. And one of our policies in the new OCP is that in subarea planning, there's a fiscal impact analysis done as part of that subarea planning. And one of the core intentions of that is to figure out what are appropriate levels of density in these areas to support the infrastructure that's required to service it. And the idea being that we could then set density targets as opposed to just allowing density occur at the, as development is proposed by individual developers. We'd like to get to a point where we say, hey, we know that this level of density is required for this area. The projects that come in have to reach that level of density. So that hasn't been done for that. We don't know, we don't have an answer for that to, what it would be required to make the servicing pay for itself at a reasonable rate. But.
Can we require that?
That would, as part of a subarea plan, we could probably establish that. I don't know about in, in a zoning by law update, it would be hard to address that. That would probably need to be done as part of the subarea plan update. I don't know, do you have a thought on that? Yeah, I don't know that we have it in the DP. We have a number of criteria that we can look for for development permit information. I'm not sure if that's one of them, but I could.
If I, if I could note, I think we could require through density bonus of set a lower density threshold. And then if development wants to go over it, then have a zoning by law requirement for, you know, almost like a small subarea plan exercise.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So going back and trying to remember when the development was approved. It was before I was on council, but there was discussion in the community. There was concern of some of the residents of the Highlands, for example, about all the traffic serving, going to and from the university and the housing going up and down the boulevard. And my recollection was that there was some promises or statements made about at some point the road that more or less the extension of Manquand would be carried on up there. Has that survived at all? Is it mandated anywhere or is there any thought about that?
Through you chair. In the subarea plan, it does say that at some point that that access needs to be constructed and used for development. But it doesn't give a threshold at which point that gets triggered. It just indicates that it should happen. So as part of a subarea plan update, especially if we were able to do some kind of fiscal analysis, we could get a sense of, you know, what point the value in adding that would be recovered by the density. But on top of that, we might actually be able to spend some time thinking about the rationale for putting in there. And we have done some preliminary examination of that. One of the big pieces of having that additional access is so that there are multiple accesses into the site for safety if one would get blocked off and there was some kind of emergency situation. And from a very preliminary investigation and discussion with some consultant that works on these types of issues, they suggested that it's, we're probably past that point where it makes sense to have that second access because there is such limited access to this location. So I think, yes, it makes sense to have it. We don't currently have a trigger for making it happen. And that, that might be a benefit to doing a subarea plan to establish a trigger for that.
And it's sort of following along the mayor's comment about, you know, what's the threshold or the critical mass necessary for, to support transit? When you think of something like this, there's obviously a cost to somebody for something like that. And where's the critical mass where that is required? And maybe you could say it's required now or should be there now. At what point does it become economically feasible to do it? I think you probably expect some contribution from some developers at least developing up there. And so there's a, there's a point there. So, so let me go back to my first question, if I might just. You know, the difference between the detailed assessment and the high level assessment. And now we're talking subarea plan, which is neither of those two, I don't think.
It's the third option.
It's the third option. So is that something, if we, subject to what council might think, but is that something that staff could undertake starting now? Is this the appropriate time to start that if we wanted to kind of have a real hard look at this area? Is that the route to go?
Through you chair. Okay, so I definitely think doing a subarea plan for this area is warranted. And there are a lot of the questions that you've raised that it could help answer. That process is going to take time. It's not, we don't have currently staff available to start working on it. It would be fairly involved and probably require a fair bit of resources to go at it. And it would take a fair length of time to complete. It's not, it wouldn't be a couple of month process. It would be, what are our subarea plans take?
Well, depending on the nature of consultation, a normal subarea plan process is about a year. And in terms of our priorities for subarea planning, we identified existing neighborhoods where there's no neighborhood plans as the priority. And we've sort of left any areas that already have a subarea plan, you know, as second to that. Although this is a bit of a unique case in that there's still a lot of development potential. And a subarea planning process could really have an impact on how this neighborhood shapes in the future. So we have, there will be trade offs if this was another subarea plan area.
And one more piece to that is that because the zoning is so flexible and does provide a lot of opportunity for development up there. As time goes on, some of those developments may occur while if we're going through a subarea planning process. And that could, you know, the options will become constrained over time as those developments happen. And the subarea plan will lose relevance, that planning process would lose relevance if certain developments came through in the interim, which is partly why staff are proposing, well, maybe we should do some of this zoning in the interim as part of the 2020 zoning by law update to, to do some of the allocation. And then if council, I'm hearing a strong interest from directing density to Flexlands B, there could be some requirements established to ensure that density occurs in that area in the interim so that opportunity isn't lost. in the interim, so that opportunity isn't lost.
Just my final question this point?
Yep.
So, so given that, and without, I personally didn't want to stop everything in its tracks right now, but is there a level of, of planning or redesignation you think you could do without the subarea plan and thinking that we're going to have a subarea plan? Is there some, I don't want to call them quick wins, or are there some sort of obvious steps that we would want to take? When I look at the options, I sort of, I'm sitting here plucking little bits and pieces from each option that I think might be desirable now.
It, it depends on what the intention is that, is you're trying to achieve. Is, is it, what are the key, maybe that would be the best thing to hear from council, what are the key objectives you want to achieve in going for quick wins? And then staff can formulate an option that would achieve this.
We had today's discussers.
They're the quick wins.
Yeah, we're gonna, thank you. I did have, before that last ask for feedback, we did have council French on the list, and I was gonna go around the table and capture the ones.
Thank you. The original campus design showed more residence buildings, so this is a great slide to demonstrate that. So those lots that bore University Boulevard are existing residence buildings. And there was a time when the concept was residence buildings would completely surround the core campus buildings. Is that still a vision, or is that no longer in conflict?
Through you, Chair. So the, the university would be a key stakeholder to respond to that question, but what I can say is that the, the changes that staff proposed in the zoning bylaw update would not preclude that. We've still retained the 1,200 student units as being available, and they would be available in the area that surrounds the campus to the north. So that does not preclude that option.
Thank you. So what I'd like to propose with you now is we'll have, we'll quickly go around the table, start council planning, go over a quick framework area round for comments before the 419's recommendation or otherwise, so.
In terms of what I'd like to see, like, I, I am not set on sticking to 450 units, could be more, could be less. I'm very open to, it's a similar approach to we take in the business part where we realize there are some issues, we brought things more restrictive to give us some time to come up with a, a good solution, so I'm open to that as well. Climate Leaders Institute, fair bit of discussion about how electric vehicles are better than combustion vehicles, how electric buses are better than electric cars, but by far the best thing for community health, climate and everything is that at least 85% of what you need to do day-to-day, you can do it in a two-minute walk. And, you know, a, a transit is a less preferred option, even EV buses are a less preferred option. So the more we can do here to provide that whole, you know, here's my whole day, I can do it right here with a quick walk. I think, you know, thinking about shared ceilings and shared walls, whether it's the incentives or requirements, making sure these buildings aren't requiring fossil fuel for heat or energy, and that was a real complete community up there. These are the sorts of things that, that I'm interested in seeing.
Okay, so for me, common sense and logic are where, where I want to work from. And that would suggest that infill, what's already there, is most desirable. Build close and then expand out as demand is needed, so. And then in addition to that, I think the secondary access issue needs to be addressed as soon as possible. As someone who is currently living on that route, it's disturbing to see food circles trucks going up the boulevard. Those trucks should be going up that secondary access, which is currently closed, it's not an option. And I think what, whatever we do at this point needs to take secondary access into consideration.
So this kind of neighborhood would, would never pass muster in this day and age. It's a car-based development, and it doesn't serve purposes of creating a complete and compact neighborhood. So to me, all of the density in the short term should be directed to Flexlands B, and I don't know what the access issues are with A, but at least it's near a road. But, and then parcel A, I mean, you can't even justify sending transit up that way with what's built there right now, which means none of those people are within a walkable distance to a transit hub. And so parcel A needs a complete rethink in terms of the density required up there to even contemplate sending a bus or putting commercial up there. Yeah. The, the fact that we've got 510 single-family homes pretty much up there, to me, is ridiculous, doesn't serve anybody's purposes very well. And so density as close in as possible to where we have transit, and a pause on parcel A until we have a, a subarea plan for that area would be my preference. Because I can't justify paying for any structure with, you know, a couple of townhomes in a few places.
Similar in line with some of my colleagues' comments, I have written here that allocate all remaining 450 units to the Flexlands based on proximity, proximity infrastructure, densification principles, complete compact communities. That is what we're aiming for, that's what the OCP 2040 says. And although it only has 960 units in the subarea plan, I read the vision and the planning principles of the subarea plan, and that's what that speaks to as well. And so I don't fully understand how we came here so far from there. I'm happy to see that single-family homes are no longer an option to be built out up there because densification is needed. And on that point, I also want to support and encourage thinking about even higher density in those Flexlands, so agree with the mayor that kind of put a pause on parcel A, that requires a huge rethink, but also for Flexlands A and B, if there is the opportunity to have higher density there in order to achieve some of the unfulfilled community amenity contributions that are still outstanding, then I'd be willing to entertain that.
Thank you. Similar comments, I think, I, I think as far as possible, would like to go at this with a clean slate, and I'm sensitive to some of the previous promises made to stakeholders up there and landowners, and I don't want to disregard those. But we've come a long way in our thinking since, since this plan was originally put in place, and are thinking around forms of housing, for example, diversity of forms of housing, more priority on transit-supported development and so forth, and walkable developments as, as the point was made. So I am, don't feel constrained by previous numbers, and would leave it to staff to consider even higher numbers. I think Flexlands B, certainly from proximity and infill thinking, is certainly an obvious choice. Whether the university chooses to have staff housing re-designated or not, I think is a secondary decision. I think from my perspective, Flexlands B could probably accommodate a lot, and it's an appropriate place for density and perhaps commercial. And as far as parcel A goes, I, I think, maybe without saying there's no more housing units available, maybe saying we want a subarea plan first before the next thing comes along up there. Because I think with respect to that, whether 450 is the right number or not, I don't want to sort of determine at this moment, but I think it definitely makes a difference to me whether it's scattered all the way up the hillside, or whether it's focused all down, for example, in one corner down at the end of the existing road. And I think that's a key decision for us going forward, is the type of housing and the compactness of the housing forms and development, as opposed to feeling that we have to, you know, fill up the whole yellow space. So I think there's, we can accommodate going forward, I think we do have the flexibility to accommodate some of the existing aspirations. But I think what's changed, for me at least, over the last few years, is, is the recognition that this is going to be a really effective area to live, and I think it should be and it could be, and a very desirable area. We want to kind of bring our current thinking to play here, and that's density, infill, transit, walkability, different forms of housing and so forth, and neighborhood hub issues, all the discussions we've had around that. So I think from my perspective, staff has a, pretty well a clean slate to, to go after some of those things. And whether you do it with a high level or the detailed level or neighborhood plan, I'll let you consider that and just come up with what you think is the most efficient way forward, with the idea that we want to get to a point where we have kind of a real grip on this area soon, however that happens to be.
I'm in support of the staff proposal as presented. I think this has been well thought through, and I would, other than comments, I would only echo my colleagues, I'd like to highlight prioritizing the second access as needing attention. I'll leave it at that.
Just really quickly, I do support staff's recommendation that we allow developers to rezone, that we wouldn't do a maximum density here, we would allow for the developer to come in and post something, that we have the opportunity to negotiate and achieve the amenities we're after. So whether it's minimum density with some sort of density bonusing scheme, council at Gil's point, we need to keep our climate emergency motion up front. I find most properties isn't putting fossil fuel infrastructure in their townhomes, so we need to start thinking about, make sure that no one's doing that going forward. That's my last comment.
Thank you. I'll chime in quickly, and then we'll see if we've given Mr. Gudnoff enough direction. I'm supportive of the, of the density on Flexlands B. I think more work needs to be done to, as far as a, a subarea plan, a re-adapted subarea plan, and whatever zoning has to happen to reflect the goals set out there. In the short, in the short term, I like the, I'm supportive of this, in general, the staff recommendation we have before us, but, but I would like to establish some projected timeline on the subarea plan to give some certainty to the other, to all stakeholders in the area and our community, so they know what we're, what to expect going forward. I suppose we'll be discussing a future budget in, in future meetings to get a date on that, but that's, that's, that's where I am. So is that enough direction? Do we need a, would you like a, do you require a motion from us?
Yeah. Yeah, but I would say that, that it's, I feel like there's a very consistent theme, so there's good clarity on direction, but a, a motion would be good.
So, so I'll move the resolutions. Just, sorry.
I got through.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just need to change the first to, I guess, that last one, that inclusive of feedback provided, period?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that is reasonable.
It would be helpful for the record and for clarity for staff if you actually put in some eyes what the feedback provided was, what's going to inform, what's coming back.
Maybe some key points.
So that down the road, when people are looking at it, they know exactly what council was talking about.
Should I try and separate?
Can we have a two minutes?
Yeah.
Just, you said, and we're back.
Thank you, Chair. Staff recommend that they can go away, summarize what they've heard from council, and come back with a crafted motion, and what is the specific thing about for council to discuss and attention to. And they can bring that back after the next presentation, get that word to the chair.
I'll consider that.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Definitely. I think that, I'm happy to come back with that solution. So we'll see us back. Our next topic is, is, I think it will be a short one, but we'll see how much time we have to give you to do that. Yeah. Thank you. There's kinds of words we can stick in our napping.
Yes.
That's your answer. That's your answer.
Somehow I ended up on the wrong slide. Geez, there we go. Good morning. So I'm Dora Gunn, Sustainability Coordinator with the District of Swamish. And here with me today is Sylvain Solaire with Moto. I'm going to be providing the presentation, but Sylvain is here to help answer questions if they come up. So today we're talking about car sharing, Moto car sharing in Swamish, and I'll be providing an update. So some background, car sharing is a type of car rental, usually short-term rental, often hourly. It's different than ride-sharing, which is things like van pooling or car pooling, or real-time ride-sharing, like Papa Ride. It's also different than ride-hailing, which is taxis, Uber, and Lyft. Car sharing can provide a number of benefits in a community. It can be a part of reducing personal vehicle ownership, so it can help families go towards a car-light lifestyle. So for example, moving from two cars for a family to move to one car in a family. It also encourages the use of sustainable modes, so walking, biking, transit, either to get to the Moto vehicle or to get around if they aren't using a Moto vehicle, if they produce their, their number of personal vehicles. And through these two ways, it contributes to greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And it can also reduce parking demand, so allowing multiple people to share one vehicle in one parking stall. Moto is a car-sharing cooperative that started in Vancouver in the West End in 1997. They provide two-way car sharing, which means that each vehicle has a home base, and for every trip, the car leaves that home base and then comes back to it. Moto initially reached out to Swamish to see if we'd be interested in starting a car share here. We explored whether any other car shares in Vancouver would be interested in coming to Swamish, and they were not interested. So we signed an agreement with Moto in June of 2018, and that agreement included a developer contribution from, for waterfront landing for the first two vehicles. The municipality agreed to provide the parking stalls, the services are provided by Moto, and then we also agreed to become a business member for employee use of car-share vehicles. So Moto started operating in Swamish in August 2018, and the district became a business member in September 2018. So our business membership, we have two vehicles available for municipal hall staff. These vehicles are shared with the community. One vehicle is out on Second Avenue, it's the Prius, you can see there, and then we also have a RAV4 up on Pemberton across from the Transit Exchange. We identified about 70 potential staff as drivers here at Municipal Hall, and then we spent some time, we did a lunch and learn with these staff, and provided multiple invitations to sign up for Moto, as well as providing support to them as to how to sign up and how to use Moto, support both from staff internally as well as from Moto. And we also have updated, or we've drafted an update to our employee travel policy. We haven't finalized that update yet, but it has been drafted and communicated to staff. The benefits to the district of having car share available is it, it limits costs to our employees for the use of their personal vehicles, which is their other option if a fleet vehicle isn't available. Those costs include maintenance, depreciation, and sometimes you need a different rate class if you're using your personal vehicle for work purposes. And then it also increases the vehicle availability, so it's just easier to get a vehicle if you need it for work. And it supports employees traveling to and from work using sustainable modes, so they can walk or bike to work, and they don't feel like they have to drive their vehicle in because they're going to need it for work purposes. So the current status of Moto in Swamish, there has been a gradual increase in membership and bookings, both with the district and also community-wide. However, the vehicles are not meeting their minimum revenue targets yet, so that's the carrying costs that Moto has to provide to... So that's the carrying costs that Moto has to provide to maintain the vehicles. Also, the district usage has been lower than anticipated. We only have 38 employees registered to date, and of those 38, only 14 are actually making bookings. So our agreement with Moto enables them to withdraw from Swamish after 18 months if they're not meeting their minimum revenue targets. And that 18-month timeline comes up on December 20th, 2019. On the other hand, if we do begin to meet the minimum revenue targets, Moto would like to add third car to the, to the group. They find that having three cars, Moto finds that having three cars in an area provides flexibility in the best services for the customers. So Moto is proposing a rate change. Currently, our business membership rates are based on usage at the regular business membership rate. So we're just charged for every bit that we use. Moto is proposing a $500 monthly flat rate fee, which would provide a certain amount of car sharing services. And that amount is calculated using the business rates, which are currently $5 an hour plus 40 cents per kilometer for the first 25 kilometers and then 28 cents per kilometer after that. So we would have, we would pay that sat $500 monthly fee. And then if we go above the services provided for that amount, then we could do that and it would be based on usage. So we still have flexibility to go above. We'd also need to update our agreement with Moto to include this change. And then we need to look at the termination clauses and allow us to review this change to make sure that if it's not working for us in the future, we can pull out of that. We did look at, we did a review to make sure this was okay for the district to do. So we, the district has to look for the best available rate for a service that we're going to be using. So we did do that. When we first signed the agreement with Moto, we looked at the other car sharing options in Vancouver, and they were interesting coming to Swamish. So the only option we have for car sharing in Swamish is Moto. We also, one moment please. Oh, yeah. So it's, so it's okay for us to pay for an increase for a service like this. What's not okay is for the district to support a business just because they like the business. So for example, if we decide we wanted a movie theater in Swamish and they wanted to come here and they just said, oh, you're just going to give us the money and we're going to start up a movie theater, that's not okay. So we can only pay for a service that we're using like this. Lastly, we, the staff would need to work harder with the employees to make sure that employees are actually making good use of this $500 monthly fee. So for example, we could set up a meeting and actually require staff to attend that meeting to help them get signed up for Moto and then show them how to use it. The biggest hurdles seem to be the initial signup and then the first use. Because once you've done those two things, it's actually really quite easy to use Moto. But people are getting stuck on both the initial signup and then just getting out there and using it for the first time. So we could require the staff attended training on how to do both of those two things. So our recommendation is that we do go ahead with this increase. So we would update the agreement and then we'd include an annual review of the agreement.
Can we have sense of community use of those two parts?
I could ask Sylvain to maybe chime in on that one.
Sure. In what terms?
So they're sitting there, anybody could sign up with Moto and use them. I'm just wondering if people downtown have actually signed up and used them.
There has been steady growth of people in the community that are using the service. It's around 70 people now in Swamish that have signed up. And we, when we provided the numbers, we didn't distinguish drivers that do work for the district from those who do not. And I don't know the breakdown. So I assume that most people who work here, live here. So you can just get an idea of how many people outside of the district are using the service.
There's semi-total, about 35, you said, that have signed up? Three each, 35. Has there been any promotion in the community that the cars are there? Like, how does it reach the community? How would they know?
So there is bus stops, ads, social media, and then working with different businesses. We haven't done a massive push. I think the investment that we made is kind of based on the participation that we've seen. And we know that things take time to ramp up. So just investing tens and tens of thousands of dollars throughout the district to put our name everywhere wouldn't necessarily translate into a massive increase. Because it's, starting to use car sharing is a process that requires a bit of reflection. It's not something that you're going to sign up overnight. Oh, I'm going to sell my vehicle and I'm going to start car sharing. We're going to slow down the purchase of an additional one. It takes a bit of time to mature, the reflection that has to happen. And we want people to be aware that they have this service available, but we don't have to remind them every ad along the highway that it's available. If they have a few touchpoints throughout the week or throughout the month, they know where the service is, they can find information easily, we see that it's enough. What's really important for us right now is to get to three car. This is really a milestone. Having three car in the community is providing, based on our experience, enough confidence in the service to use it. If there's only two, when one is booked, you only have one backup option. And there is actually a big shift in the mindset when you know that you have more than one backup.
Counselor Penney and Counselor Star.
So start with a selfish question. Is the staff program available that councilers?
To the Chair, I can answer that one. Yes, it is. And so we need to get you signed up as well.
Yes. I might be very happy. The, like, I see that Moto holds the title to the cars that we got as part of the community and any contribution. If this, you know, doesn't work out for whatever reason, would the title revert back to the district or that sort of like an investment we've made?
So the, the cost of the cars, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes. So if, if Moto pulls out because they didn't meet their minimum revenue targets, then yes, they, they would sell the vehicles. There's a calculation in our agreement as to how much of it would, we would get back some amount of the vehicle costs.
Thank you. And then finally, one of the other conversations at the Climate Leaders Institute was the importance of getting people to experience an electric vehicle and shifting perceptions of these. Is it something that we can explore? And we also talked about the importance of a third vehicle, you know, maybe rather than this $500 monthly rate, exploring us somehow facilitating a purchase of an EV as the third car and trying to make it easier for people to try it. Are these things that we can look at?
Chair, so absolutely, we have contemplated a third vehicle being an EV vehicle. We haven't moved forward on that yet just because we aren't meeting the minimum revenue targets. I don't know that Moto would be open to trying to move forward with a third vehicle and not doing the flat fee. I think the flat fee is a step toward getting us to a place where a third vehicle is an option.
Can I also just clarify a point? Because it's sort of, I, I think one of the comments made was about, well, district employees, you know, live in town and might use Moto for their personal use. Just want to be very clear that the business membership is for, very clearly for business use. However, once people start using it for business use, employees start using it for business use. And wow, that was really easy and it's convenient. I live downtown near a car. Then they would sign up for their own personal account. We're not, we're not supplementing personal use of the motor.
Thank you. Self-proclarification. You're good, Counselor Penney. Counselor Star.
So we have a few additional developments in the waterfront landing, which there's a requirement for them to provide additional car share vehicles. Are those, anticipate that they will be a Moto car or is it kind of up in the air?
I, I, the Chair, that would be up in the air at this point. So if Moto continues to exist in Swamish, then I think Moto would be an excellent option. If there was another car share also in Swamish, then I actually don't know what the wording of waterfront landing is, but it's possible that it could be a different car share. And if Moto does not exist in Swamish, then without Moto.
Different question. There's a line in the staff report that says the 25 budget discussions will also include consideration of not replacing one of the Toyota Priuses. Can you speak a little bit more to that and how realistic that might be?
Yes. So that is something that has been raised as a possibility. So not having the Prius and instead using Moto. And that would obviously encourage staff to use Moto. We haven't 100% finalized the cost comparison between fleet and Moto. It's quite sensitive to the number of kilometers that are driven in those vehicles. And so our plan was to bring that full analysis back to council during the budget process.
Well, I have a question. I was, do we have an understanding? We've been speaking about this in two different ways, in the ridership number or sort of the subscriptions, I guess, or however you want to say that, and then the dollars as far as the special. Do we have an understanding of how many, how far are we from having enough registered users? We're at 70-ish and that's not enough to support the two vehicles. So what is, we're contemplating a $500 a month bump, but I just, I'm not quite drawing, connecting those dots yet. So where, what's a target, say, per vehicle to make it usable? Given that we would like to have two, you know?
So we do have target number, like a cost number, which is in our agreement. And it's in a $650 range. I don't know that there is an actual membership target number, but perhaps I can pass it to Sylvain to see.
On average, our members are spending about $100 a month. But you, you're looking at a population which is predominantly living close to a network that is well-established. So the use may be very different. Because we have about 30 to 40% of our members that do rely on Moto as their primary vehicle. They do not own a vehicle. Maybe they live in a pretty dense area where they are doing most of their trips. We know in fact that they're doing most of their trips with walking, cycling, public transit. And when they need to use a vehicle, they use a shared one. It's, it's different than maybe a more suburban community where Moto would be used as the second car. And I don't have, I cannot tell you what's the average spend for people that do use it as a second. It may be less, it may be more, but the 100 is about average.
Sorry, can I also just clarify one? One point made is you said a $500 bump. I just want to clarify that we're already paying a couple hundred dollars, whatever it is, a month. We're kind of guaranteeing that extra amount. With the push to get more employees using the car, probably the $500 limit will become moot or at least will be, will be a small amount of sort of extra.
And I was trying to understand if we need to see double the uptick or 10-fold the uptick? Maybe that's, and if we can ballpark that, it can be a better understanding.
I can answer that if you want right now. Between usage from the district and the other members throughout the community, there is enough demand to sustain one vehicle. But car sharing with just one vehicle is, it doesn't fly. So I won't come any further.
No, thank you. That gives me the perspective that I was trying to, I can extract that from there. Counselor?
I am really naive in this world, so bear with me. Are there distance restrictions? Like, could I drive a Moto car to Saskatchewan?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have any data on where the existing cars are primarily going? Like, is it mostly local within Swamish use? Or does it spend a lot of time on Highway 99 Metro Vancouver, north of Wissler? Do you have any data on that?
So, yeah. We do know where the vehicles are going, but I will tell you that most trips, the line share of the trips are between two and six hours and five and 30 kilometers. That's the sweet spot. This is, people use, tend to use Moto for very practical reasons. Grocery shopping, social activities, picking up the kids at school, going somewhere for the weekend or for the day, running errands. Distances to kind of prime destinations here, maybe a bit further than 30 or 40 K if you think about going to Wissler or so on or south. But most people use them in town, running errands, doing very simple things.
Oh, okay. Okay, so then further to that, you say I can drive my Moto to Saskatchewan. Are time restrictions?
No. By default, you will be able to book a vehicle for as long as three weeks. But if you want to book more, you just have to ask and we have to just check if that's feasible. We want to be mindful that if you take a vehicle in a neighborhood where there's not, where there is not a lot of vehicles available, we want to make sure that it's not going to penalize other members. So we may invite you to take another vehicle or we may organize a vehicle swap. But there has been people throughout the summer, mostly who've been booking vehicles for more than a month, going all the way to Yukon and so on, can be used as a replacement to car rental based on convenience and cost.
Thank you. Counselor?
Put forward the motion, the staff recommendation.
Move, yes, move on to the reality. Second, Counselor Star, go ahead.
I think that car sharing does take time for people to develop new habits. Certainly, I put off buying a car several, after my second child was born, because I had access to car share. So it, it makes a lot of sense. But I do think we need to make more of an effort with our staff and certainly we'll be looking at that Prius spend in the budget, maybe force the issue a little bit. And then I would like to revisit this one year from now to see how we're doing.
I don't have my idea to add. Do you think she would do?
Counselor?
Yeah, I agree that something like this takes time to develop. I'll make a comparison to Seinfeld. NBC at first wasn't sure if that show was going to work. It took a chance and it became the super mega hit that it is. And I think that's what's happening here is maybe right now, the network's a little unsure if this is going to work. But I'm, I'm confident that given time, our community will make this work. And especially in light of densification that we're seeing downtown. With the buildings that are coming online now, I think that will get us to the sweet spot sooner than later, where for sure two cars are going to work and I would anticipate the jump to three. And then when we hit that jump to three exponentially, it goes out from there. So I'm supportive of this for sure.
Thank you. I'm also supportive of this. I would like to see some benchmarking progress reports, something along the way so we can get an idea that we're, you know, that we're climbing this mountain to get us to the third and who knows, fourth, fifth, sixth, you know, and so on down the line as, as we continue to densify, particularly downtown, but throughout the community. So I'm supporting this motion. So we're back. Don't forget the comments. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Motion carries down the slate. Thank you. So next up, we'll loop back to, we're good. So we're going to loop back to the discussion from earlier, which was item two, university subarea planning. All the guns are here. Are you going to attempt to summarize our, our question? Okay. Left forward to it. Also, the new recommendation that captures, attempted to capture our session.
So we have tried to summarize the key points that we heard from council and we've included in this recommendation. Perhaps I'll allow you to read it and provide feedback as to where we are. Thank you.
Before I put on the floor, but I would suggest that a change we made that we allocate all remaining 450 units, the central location. And maybe it's the last bullet point that we need to reframe in terms of allocate. in terms of allocate additional density to parcel A and the flex lands based on a more complete subarea plan.
Should I write that?
Those are the pieces that I feel like are missing.
To the chair, are those supported? Should I make those changes?
There's other comments on the table.
What's other comments? So you will hold till we go around the table here and we'll see where we're at, and we can figure out the contentious pieces and potentially vote on those individually. So councillor Race, please.
Well, similar point. I was just wondering if we want to include something there to indicate the possibility of increasing density beyond the original university plan. To me, I think that's a critical aspect of this process. And I don't want to be prescriptive about that, but as I said, I think our thinking has changed in these subdivisions since that was created.
You think councillor?
So, yeah, I'm not totally comfortable with the 450 minutes. I'd be more inclined to leave the number out, go lower possibly, what comes before us, and rely on rezoning if and when we decide we actually want more density. So I'm not close-minded to more density, but I'm not sold that 450 is an appropriate minimum. The other piece, I think we need to very clearly articulate the importance of designing for climate emergency. Because I don't think what's there captures that.
If I may just clarify this point. We are planning to bring forward something that's more general, that's across the board, that talks to the items that relate to climate emergency. So when we come back to council to talk about those updates, we expect that those would apply across all zones. So if it's, you know, things like heating sources, I think that, you know, if that's where council decides to go, it would be applicable to all zones as well.
So I take your point that that could be possibly redundant, but I think it's useful communicating our direction, our thought, to just include that here, even if it's a bit of a lot of thing anyways. It's not too fancy.
My first read through, I missed the reference to secondary access. So that was going to be my point, but it's there, and I can support everything that's in this round.
How about the edits that have been provided and some feedback on that? The commentary around councillor Penningill's inclusion of more environmental language in this motion?
I can support adding some reference to the climate emergency, yes.
Okay.
That last bullet, allocate limited density to parcel A. But if someone just develops to that, then they wouldn't have to do the subarea plan, which defeats purpose, which is don't put anything on there until we have a subarea plan. So how does that work in part?
Through you, chair. It was, if council wants to allocate zero units to parcel A, then that can be changed in a minute. I think we were just trying to bounce everything that we thought we heard, but if we interpreted incorrectly, that can be changed.
Can we put pause? Or, we can't sterilise someone's land, so I'm trying to figure out what the right word is here.
Well, it could be one unit that's not sterilising the land. In legal context, it isn't. As long as you allow for some development, it doesn't even have to be residential development. It's not sterilising the land. We were thinking, you know, something in the range of 20 to 50 units. And obviously, the potential is probably higher on that parcel, so naturally, somebody would want to go for the rezoning process, but we could severely limit it.
What I want to signal to the developers is bring back a great point, and show us that this is wonderful from an infrastructure perspective. So I agree with councillor Penningill, I'd say allocate the majority of the remaining units. Do you respect that? Do you? Do you? Good.
Well, if, the more specific you are, the more likely we are to come back with the exactly correct bylaw that you're looking for.
And then through the chair, I'm just not understanding councillor Stoner's change.
My suggestion is that we allocate all of the remaining 450 units, recognising that we can't entirely sterilise parcel A, but that parcel A, parcel A and the flex lands should feel like they are open to coming back with higher density if and when there is a more robust subarea plan completed. So I'm open to the idea of having more than 450 units on the flex lands and/or on parcel A. I want the remaining 450 units or the, as close to that as we can get, as close to our infrastructure as possible. And any future densification or additional densification needs to happen with the more comprehensive subarea plan.
I think this cashes it.
Someone change required, replied there. Councillor Anderson?
Yes, I'm not concerned about changing the wording as it is there regarding the first bullet and the latter bullet on limited density to parcel A. I'm most concerned with including councillor Race's suggestion of a general statement and philosophy of accommodating higher density in the university subarea plan generally. But I don't want to get too involved, but I would not prefer not to be too prescriptive in some of the suggestions I've been hearing, along with some suggestions I've been hearing.
And to clarify it, your comment was that you want to make sure that councillor Race's point is included?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Another clarified question. Remind me, which one is the university, or UH?
UC1 is the campus, but the campus also includes some UH1's land. The flex lands are on the university campus, but are UH housing lands. But UC1 is the campus.
There's nothing for including the university from rezoning and updonning UC1 land.
Through you, chair. No, they're welcome to make that application, but there are some quite significant constraints, primarily environmental, on the land that the university owns. So the lands that are designated as the flex lands, the UH1s, are really the best lands for development. The rest of the campus have less, much less capacity for opportunities for development.
Well, I'm just thinking back to councillor French's statement that the original vision sort of had residents sort of all around that area. And if they needed all to be residents, could you put like, hoes there?
That is a possibility, yes. Part of this comes to, you guys are a big, a big part of this, so I want to make sure that we get that, that we've given you. Through you, chair. I feel like if I added a point here, draft policy that supports additional, supports rezoning to add density. That would capture, I believe, the comment that I've heard, and otherwise, I think, climate emergency. I think we're getting close, so Mary Elliot and then...
I think if you're going to say that in your last bullet to capture councillor Penningill's comments around in line with practices and climate considerations?
Would that do it in line with, would it be, or do you want a separate point?
I think it's separate, because it's not specific just to more density. It's anything that happens in the timeline.
So how would that sound? Apply climate emergency plans to the zoning changes?
I would say to development.
Yeah, to develop, to future development in the area, just to, probably the biggest scope, no? I'm still mostly in the odds around the table at this one, so this one, it's pretty good. So that's what we, we're going to have to, councillor Race. The recommendation, it's always seconded by Mary Elliot, and that's what the recommendation is. And that's both parts of, both parts of that. Discussion, is there any discussion left on this one? And with that, I will call the question. All those in favour? Opposed, if any? Motion carries down the slate. Thank you very much for your work on this one. Yeah, I'm going to save it. Well, councillor, we are exactly, exactly on time, but we just omitted something. So we are going to, some minor detail. No, but I would like to hear the conference, the scheduled item four, which is the conference updates from councillor Penningill and councillor Stoner. I think we do have, we do have 15 minutes we could use now, and we still have an hour for lunch, so I'm just saying a little. So this one, yes, so who, so it's councillor Penningill and Stoner, so I will, these are separate updates though, so Penningill's on those first. Oh, it's Penningill.
Okay. Let me take up a lot of time.
Seven and a half, yes.
There was a, so I went to livable cities, and I will focus on that because I attended the Climate Leaders Institute with councillor Stoner. Livable cities is a national forum that happens every two years. Absolutely fantastic. This one focused on the intersection between health and the climate emergency. And it's something, going through it, that I realised I hadn't given a lot of thought to, but it's important because, you know, we talked about climate change in terms of the economic threat and opportunity, you know, just our basic survival. But this, you know, made it very clear how much public health and health professionals are thinking about this. So Peel Public Health, which is Mississauga, Brampton, Aladdin, 1.4 million people in Ontario have identified climate change as the biggest health, public health threat of the 21st century. And so that includes things like anxiety, depression, sort of mental health issues, respiratory issues, forest fires and so on, moles when it comes to flooding, the inequitable impacts which cause social breakdowns because climate change doesn't impact everyone equally. They've also, this is a little bit scary, mosquitoes that carry dengue fever, malaria, and zeb virus have been found in Windsor in 2017, and with climate change, those are spreading. And you sort of layer on, it seems to be, I guess, a North American thing, we're resistant to vaccines. These are really concerning. There's issues around heat. People do have a certain tolerance for heat. And so that's why these things are a really big deal. They identify to, though, one of the, a good antidote, especially for the mental health, anxiety, depression, is taking action on climate change. If people feel like they're actually doing something, they feel a lot better. Dr Courtney Howard was one of the presenters. She sits on the board of the Canadian Medical Association. She's also the president of the Canadian Physicians for the Environment. She made a few different comments, but one was on fracking. She said woefully understudied in Canada, and the very little research we do have does not look good for fracking. She's also seen that it is disproportionately negatively impacting Indigenous people and more vulnerable people, largely because of the geographic proximity where the fracking is occurring. So just tying it into our strategic plan, there's a whole lot about, I would say falls into our neighbourhood connectivity and public spaces. There are some really interesting charts that show that if we do things to impact someone's, change someone's income, their perception of their quality of life, their life satisfaction, will increase moderately across the world, whether we raise or lower their income. And we could spend a lot of money doing that, and has very little impact. It's like a small increase in quality of life, either ways of projections. On the other hand, if we improve things like social connectedness, feeling of community, and this gets into the whole public spaces round, it will have massive, massive positive impacts on people's life satisfaction. If we do a poor job of that, the, I guess the data shows that we will feel really, really lousy as people know how good our lives are and our life satisfaction. So this really, I would say, to be honest, in our strategic plan, that was the one pillar that didn't resonate as much with me until I went to this conference. And now I really, really start to understand the importance of some of these things. And it really pointed to a lot more focus on some of these community spaces, helping bring people together. You know, as I'm thinking about dykes and rec centres, how are we thinking about them in terms of emergency shelters? Can dykes be gathering spaces? You know, green roofs, not just a climate thing, but a place to gather and have a community. So that stuff really resonated with me. Just dive into the Climate Leaders Institute. You know, we hear about the problems of getting EV buses here. Shenzhen in China has 16,000 EV buses in their city. That's all of their buses, they've converted to electric. And then heard stories about California, they were told electric buses just weren't feasible yet. So they've now built three factories in California, employing all kinds of people, building electric buses. Fair bit of talk from communities from Oxford, which is near Hamilton, Ontario, because it gets pretty cold in winter, but also on the island, communities saying that they're seeing incremental costs to do social housing that is step five and zero emissions. So in general, three to 5% incremental cost to develop. In one or two cases, it's a 10% greater cost. But these places are looking at requirements for social housing because the longer-term operating costs are much lower. So for that initial increase, you're building much better buildings, which are much cheaper to operate. So for me, the importance of moving towards step five and zero emission really makes sense. There was some talk about a University of Waterloo study that asked 2,300 households in high-risk flood areas, do you live in a flood, a high-risk flood area? And only 5.6% of people thought they did. And then they further dug into asking people, you know, if you get flooded, you know, what are your obligations to replace your home and so on? And there's huge gaps. So people, one, don't think, understand they're at risk, and two, if their home gets damaged, they don't understand that they are on the hook to pay for it a lot of the times. And this lined up with some of the other suggestions that was talked about, smart cities, and what worked in those sorts of programmes, where it's really important to educate people about why we're doing these things. And so although people in our community are demanding climate action, are understanding there's a climate change problem, they probably are quite lucky, don't understand how personally it's impacting them. And the risk there is then, when we present solutions which may require a fair bit of change, there's going to be a fair bit of resistance because that understanding of how that connects to, you know, the actual personal risk I have, isn't going to be there. So two takeaways for me on this is, I think it might be really valuable if we had some public health or health background on a climate leadership team. I know that's a staff committee, so I'm sort of getting out of my domain a little bit, but this really makes sense to me. But also that as we move forward with climate leadership team, I think we probably need to put a lot of effort into helping our community become aware of how they are personally at risk and impacted by climate change. And if we just sort of bring really wonderful and maybe perfect solutions to a climate leadership team, if they don't have that context and that public understanding within, and the public doesn't feel involved in coming up with those solutions based on a common understanding of the risk, we may face a lot of resistance with the things we try and move forward. Just a couple little miscellaneous things. There's a lot of talk about using micro grants. We've talked about it in other contexts, community building and so on, but to, and for youth initiative. For youth initiatives, we, we talked about doing this, like 500 grants for kids or whoever that wants to do something to impact climate change can be really empowering and useful. Had someone suggest that we look at using a firehouse engagement tool, because firehouses are really wonderful places, and strongly advocate for that. Open North has funding to help communities on data governance, and that's something we talked about.
Makes that last bit sound like the disclaimer at the end of a drug commercial.
I'll come in really quickly with a few things. So yes, councillor Penningill and I were at the Climate Leadership Institute, which was put over the BC Municipal Climate Leadership Council. There was representation from the mayor of Haynes Junction all the way to city councillors in Raincoober. So a really great diverse group of people in the room. It was a relatively small conference, like 50 to 60 people. So it gave us a great option to have some thorough discussion at a high level, but then also really dig into some practical tools on how we start to address this as municipalities. Across the board, I think the two key concerns- And across the board, I think the two key concerns I heard from folks in the room was, are we going to be able to make the changes necessary to curb climate change fast enough? And that kind of anxiety that we all know kind of built. And then the other one was really the polarization in the conversation, and how do we try and overcome it, and can the Penn Gill spoke to that a little bit? And so one of the key things that we did was a poll session on how you backcast and how you create a vision for the future that is, um, that is really based on a clear vision that is not necessarily tied to current projections, but then you, once you have the vision built out, you then create the steps that will bring people along the way to that vision in the end. And so really trying to tie people's day to day in with that clear vision of what that future is going to look like, because that future is going to be very different in people's day to day. And so that was an interesting session, I'm happy to chat more about that. Some of the other just kind of things that I picked up along the way, the township of Langley, um, is really leading on the EV, uh, components in terms of both infrastructure and some of the bylaws. They have some really interesting resources there that I'm looking to dig into a little bit more. The city of Surrey has a fully functioning, uh, renewable natural gas plant that they use to actually power their trucks, their garbage trucks in their community, obviously much bigger, but I thought was interesting in the context of the landfill methane gas collection that we've been chatting about a little bit. And Richmond and New West are really advancing the conversations on the limitations of step code with regards to it just being a measure of energy efficiency, um, and trying to push that to zero carbon building, so some good resources there as well. Lots of really interesting stats that came out, but really pertinent, um, Alex Boston, who's the executive director of Renewable Cities Spoke, um, and there was lots of things that came out of his conversation, but, um, one particular standout piece was that we currently have more one person occupied, single family homes than two, three, four person occupied, single family homes. So that proportion has shifted, where we have more single unit, like, single individuals living in single family homes than all the others combined right now. So that's, that's really, that's kind of, it's, to me, was kind of the epitome of where we're at, and how we need to shift that concept around how we zone, how we see how we're living. And he really tried to drive home, um, as municipalities, the, what is in our sphere of influence is zoning, and that's really how we can shift things on a climate file as, as municipalities, is how we build our communities, and really focusing back on that. So those were the key takeaways, I'm happy to dive into further details. One other piece was, there was a great, okay, well, there was a really great afternoon session with, uh, about eight different youth came in and presented, um, kind of why they've been involved in the climate emergency movement. And then they did kind of roundtable discussions of how municipalities could help support them in the work that they do. And it really kind of lit a light bulb in my head around how we can continue to do better, to engage our youth. We obviously have a youth strategy going on, um, but I'm really committed to try and find a champion or two within the school district itself, um, and either get more youth in council chambers and teach them how the process works, or spend more time in classrooms, um, explaining how the process works, so that they can feel more supported to be involved.
We'll take, you can take my last minute.
I'm going to pass 30 seconds over to the council.
So, uh, yeah, thank you for mentioning the students and seniors. So, uh, I just have to mention, so a few of them are going to cop, uh, I don't remember which number it is.
I do.
Uh, so they had tickets for Chile, uh, I guess, and then when that got canceled, tickets to Air Canada, when that got canceled, uh, I guess Air Canada's been unwilling to refund their tickets, some of them getting tickets to the new, uh, the new destination. So, uh, if you feel like reaching out to Air Canada and sharing your thoughts on that, please leave. So some people get it, it's by month, and others, not so much.
Thank you. I don't think we have time for, for the discussion of that. So we're going to break for, for lunch, and we'll reconvene, uh, as scheduled at 1:00. Thank you, and we're back to committee the whole, um, November 12th, 2019. We're back for our lunch break, and, uh, at this point, uh, I see you've had, uh, lots of people join us in our, in our gallery, um, for our next, for our next, uh, agenda items. Before we get underway with those, um, just like to, uh, give everyone, um, just a few, a few guidelines here. We, um, we need to make sure that we allow our, uh, the presenters and anyone speaking actually, at, at any point, um, room, room to do that, so no, there's no heckling or cheering, or, or anything else from, uh, from the audience. And, um, we are on a tight schedule today, so what we've done is we've got, we have 45 minutes per, um, per topic, and we've got three different presenters. So we have Fortis BC, followed by Wood Fiber LNG, followed by the BC Oil and Gas Commission. So we've asked, uh, each of the presenters to present us a 20-minute, um, presentation, and with 25 minutes for, uh, questions, and, uh, for, for the questions from, um, from council. And I'd like to put forward to my fellow councillors that we, um, allow five minutes, um, after the 20 is passed for us, that last five minutes be used, um, for, uh, one member of the, of the public to come forward and, um, and ask clarifying questions, um, around the presentations that we've seen. And I'd like to remind everyone else, it doesn't get chosen for, if this, if this, if this is the way we vote to proceed, um, I'd like to remind you that your written submissions, um, will be received after, uh, will be received after, and will appear on the next council agenda for the, for the official record on, on these, um, on these subjects. So, um, so I will move that we allot those last five minutes, uh, to, um, representative, uh, representative from the, uh, from the gallery to, to ask questions, um, that follow in each, uh, each presentation and subsequent council, uh, debate. Counsel French? Seconds? Yeah? Okay. Do you need to have a discussion on this?
No, but just a point of comment, um, my perspective is that questions would go through the chair.
Oh, yeah.
You're cross-examining the speaker.
I, I'll give, I'll give that direction when we, when we get to that point.
Does it make sense? What you're proposing is democracy in action, and, uh, I support that, I support dialogue and diplomacy, and civil discussion. Thanks for suggesting.
So with that, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I'm hoping suggestions on how we select the, or the gallery selects their representative. So, we'll, um, we'll cover that, let's go with, um, I'm comfortable having that, um, be discussed, uh, at the time, but we are tight on time, I don't want to use that five minutes to do that, so if the gallery could organize itself, uh, so we answer those questions in a timely fashion. Okay. And with that, we'll get underway. So our first update this afternoon is from Fortis BC, and we've got with us Vanessa Connolly, she's the Senior Manager, External Affairs, and Gord Schuberg, uh, Senior Manager, Municipal and Community Relations. Please come forward. Would you like us to sit here, or use the podium?
We'll use the slides.
Either spot, this is, this is, committee the whole, we like to do more.
Sure.
About the MRBI.
Oh, about the MRBI, oh, thank you. Just like that? Okay. So, good afternoon, thank you. I'd like to start by acknowledging we're gathered on the traditional territory of the Squamish First Nation, um, and we're grateful to be here, and we appreciate the invitation from Mayor and Council, uh, to talk about the Eagle Mountain Pipeline Project today. So as you mentioned, um, so my name's Vanessa Connolly, I lead External Relations for Fortis BC on our major projects, and I'm joined by Gord Schuberg, and Gord is the Community and Municipal Relations Lead for the Eagle Mountain Pipeline Project. So today, we're going to give an update on the Eagle Mountain Pipeline Project, an overview of the project, and some of the current activities that are taking place, uh, how we've been working with the District of Squamish staff, and we're going to talk a little bit about upcoming public engagement that's planned on the project, and then we look forward to some questions.
Thank you, and I believe we covered this in advance, I just wanted to clarify, we've got, we've got 20 minutes, um, for your presentation this time, so if you need to add at any point, I'll...
If we're going too slow, you'll give us a match? Sure, absolutely.
I'll keep an eye, but I don't know where our end destination is, so all you can...
Okay, yeah, it's not, it's just a handful of slides here. So I'll start with an introduction on Fortis BC. Fortis BC is the largest energy provider in British Columbia, and we serve over 1.1 million homes and businesses in 135 municipalities and 56 First Nations around the province. So we deliver natural gas, electricity, propane, and alternative energy services around the province, and we serve 5,000 customers here in Squamish. We also own and operate, uh, approximately 50,000 kilometers of natural gas pipelines throughout the province, and over 7,200 kilometers of electric lines as well. And we operate the first two LNG facilities in the province, so we have our Tilbury LNG facility in Delta, which was built in 1971, and we have our Mount Hayes LNG facility on Vancouver Island, and that's near Ladysmith, and that was commissioned in 2011. And those two facilities were originally built to serve our natural gas customers on what's the coldest day of the year, so that we could send gas out into our system. Uh, we have over 2,300 employees working in British Columbia, and our parent company is Fortis Inc., which is based in St. John's, Newfoundland. So talk a little bit about the project. So over the last several years, we've been developing the Eagle Mountain Pipeline Project to serve the proposed Wood Fiber LNG facility. And this underwent, um, an independent environmental review by the Squamish First Nation, and as well, it went through an environmental assessment from the BC Environmental Assessment Office, and we received approval from both in 2016. So in the last couple of years, um, we've been focused on engineering and design and planning of the project. That's what we've been referring to as optimization, so a lot of work happening behind the scenes on the technical side, and not as much happening in the public realm as a result. So the project's comprised of approximately 47 kilometers of pipeline, a tunnel, and our two compression facilities. The pipeline route you'll see here on the map, um, largely follows our existing pipeline, which was built in the early 1990s to serve Squamish, it serves Whistler, Sunshine Coast, and Vancouver Island. Um, and so by following that existing route, um, we're able to minimize disturbance as much as we can. A tunnel is planned as well for the pipeline in order to eliminate ground disturbance in the wildlife management area and the estuary. Um, and that's a condition of our approval from Squamish First Nation and a response to feedback that we received during that time. And we'll be upgrading our compressor station in Coquitlam as part of the project, and we'll also need to build a new compressor station in Squamish. There was an initial site for the compressor station that was looked at downtown Squamish, and in response to feedback from that, uh, we did look at moving the compressor station to Mount Mulligan, and so that's the current site that has been approved, um, for the compressor station. But it's been noted recently in the media, um, we've, we've commented in the media that we are in fact looking at a potential new site for that compressor station at or near the Wood Fiber site, and that's again, in feedback to, um, in response to feedback that we've had from the community. So that's still undergoing a technical review right now, we don't have more to share on that, but we are happy to come back and, and talk to you more about that if that goes ahead. I just want to touch really briefly on, um, some of the routing through town. So this map is just to show you our approved environmental assessment certificate corridor, and it just shows a specific area here, you can see Highway 99 to the left, and that's Finch and Robin. And so it's just important, we wanted to note that we haven't finalized our, our pipeline route selection in this area yet, um, but this is the approved corridor that we have from the Environmental Assessment Office, and, um, we have had some questions recently around where we'll be doing some routing as, in response to some of the field work that Gord will talk on in a minute, but just to let you know that we're still working through, um, the routing through this section. And in addition to getting feedback from the community and the District of Squamish staff, we'll be looking at this from an engineering and an environmental, um, perspective, as well as our constructability, so that's going to be supported by some of the field activity happening now, and probably some future work that we'll do as well. So Gord will touch more on public engagement, but one of the focuses we'll have is on the routing component of the pipeline.
Okay, thanks Vanessa. So three themes that I want to touch on, uh, just briefly, one is the, uh, what's been going on in terms of field activity? And the second is, are we working with the district, with, uh, district staff? And the third is public engagement, what, what, what we've done and what's coming up. So in terms of recent activity, um, this past summer, we started working on restoring this, uh, forest res serviced road up on, in the Indian River Valley, and, um, we've been undertaking geotechnical, uh, test holes over the last couple of months, so that we can get a sense of, uh, what kind of sub-ground, um, geology there is, so that we know where rock is and, and, uh, and so forth. So those studies have been going on mostly up in, uh, the hill, Indian River Valley, like I say, uh, more recently, uh, we, we've done some geotechnical bore holes, one on the east side, one on the west side of Highway 99, Industrial Avenue in Finch, and that's because, uh, in order to cross Highway 99, we would intend boring underneath it, so we need to understand what the geological condition looks like there. We've done some geological, or some, uh, geotechnical work on, uh, the BC rail site, which, uh, would be intended to be the east portal of the nine-kilometer tunnel that would head in a westerly, uh, direction over to Wood Fiber. Uh, we've also done some geotechnical work over at Wood Fiber, and, uh, also near the CN rail tracks on what we call the Sabre property, which is just off of, uh, the CN rail tracks near BC rail. So, um, we've also just completed some geotechnical work on private lands heading, uh, south and east of Finch, up, uh, uh, just, just off the end of Finch there and up the hill. So there's been a fair amount of activity, I've tried to connect with, uh, most of you in advance of stuff that's going on, whether it's letters being mailed out, or whether it's, uh, field activity that started, so that you each have an idea of what's coming up, just in case you're contacted by, uh, uh, people in the community. So, uh, that's a geotechnical work, survey work, uh, in addition to work that was completed several years ago. McElhaney's been out over the last week or so, doing some work on Finch, doing some work on Industrial Avenue, and of course, all this work has been preceded with communication with district staff, getting permits, and, and making sure that, uh, your staff is well aware of exactly when and where that, uh, work is being undertaken. So, um, that's, uh, what's been happening, there's been several mailings of letters to, um, rights holders and landowners in the community over the last several months, and those are required in order to support the Oil and Gas Commission consultation notification requirement. So you're going to hear from the OGC a little later, I understand. Part of their requirement before we make an application is to, uh, notify, uh, folks that are affected, and make sure that we entertain any feedback that they provide. So the OGC has a consultation process, um, associated with any applications. That's it for that. When working with the district, so, um, uh, over the last year, there's been increased, um, communication in the Squamish chief, uh, like I say, the, the, the field activity, people have noticed that there's more, um, uh, uh, information getting out into the media and so forth, and, and, uh, so we started working with, with, with Gary, with others in his staff, um, uh, on the environmental side, on the engineering side. We've developed what's called a project relationship protocol, which is basically an, an intention of, you know, how are we going to efficiently work together with district staff to make sure that we understand all the requirements, uh, with respect to this project that the district has, uh, that we understand what the, the, the conditions of permits and approvals are, and who do we work with, so that we can work efficiently together. Uh, we can, we can appreciate that coming into town with a project this size, um, we have to be respectful of the capacity of district staff to be able to work with us. And so, uh, this project relationship agreement also, uh, contemplates, uh, capacity, funding, uh, we already have some of that in place, if there's more that's needed. We want to make sure that the, uh, that, that... We want to make sure that the, that we work in a very respectful way with the district in terms of the staffing and capacity they have. On the permitting side, I've mentioned that we've already been working with staff on the geotechnical permitting. As we move towards construction, which won't be for at least another year yet, there's going to be a lot of work that's needed in order to identify what approvals and permits are needed with respect to the tunnel, with respect to pipeline, with respect to compressor station facilities, once that gets determined. And we want to make sure that we're leaving good time so that there can be a good understanding by staff of what this project looks like and that we understand what the district's requirements are. So over the coming months, we've already started having engineering meetings to look at the gas pipeline location in city streets, and there's going to need to be more discussions happen in that respect. And so there's going to be a lot more communication needed with district staff. Ongoing engagement on conditions management plans, so we haven't filed, as a condition of the environmental assessment approval, we have, I believe, 12 plans that are called conditions management plans. Several of them require the input from the District of Squamish. So we started talking with district staff about how we deal with, say, some of the social challenges, the economic opportunities associated with a large workforce coming into town, and I'm going to share a little bit more about what we call a community table on the next slide. But one of the conditions management plans deals with the social impacts and how Fortis intends mitigating those. That will, that plan will be submitted to the district for review. I understand the district's going to provide an opportunity to post it on their website, and so we'll be able to engage, you know, public comments on those over the coming months. The engagement on route selection in Squamish, Vanessa showed a slide just a moment ago about two alternative routes, for example, in the Finch-Robin Drive area that have been approved corridors through the environmental assessment certificate. But we want to hear from the community. So we're putting together engineering information, technical information. That's why the surveying has been done on Finch over the last week, and we want to make sure that when we come into the community early next year, we have a good body of technical information so that we can present, answer questions, and engage the community in terms of their thoughts on the routing in that area. Okay, last one, and then we can open it up for comment. Community engagement, so as part of the assessment of social impacts and economic opportunities that a large construction workforce may have on this community, we assembled a group of security, health, and social organizations and agencies that we thought might help us better understand what those impacts could be, what those opportunities could be. We held our first community table session on October the 22nd. Some of you were there, and we intend holding another one on possibly November 25th. We're just firming up that date. What we heard are a number of themes. I counted 10 main themes, and we've, we came away from October 22nd. We documented the themes of what we heard. We circulated those back out to those that have attended the workshop. Many of the folks thought that that was a good representation of actually the discussion that happened. There's a couple of additional comments that some of them have made. So we're wanting to go back to that community workshop, that community table again later in November and basically say, well, this is what we heard, and these are the initial thoughts Fortis has in terms of following up on each of those themes that we heard. And there's some things that we heard that we really hadn't thought about, like, okay, local hiring has always been a strong theme of ours, but local hiring will offset the need for additional workforce accommodations, say, in a construction work camp. And so we're thinking, you know, maybe there needs to be even stronger focus on hiring local, hiring disadvantaged groups. The idea of legacy housing came up. We hadn't thought about that. That seemed to be a strong theme that several people brought up. It seemed to indicate that maybe a water-based camp might not be the only option that might be acceptable. And so we're starting to take this information and now go away and have it inform internal discussions around workforce accommodations and where they should be located, how we should integrate the RCMP on the security side, how we should integrate coastal health on the health side, so that we can minimize the impact on the community, on the resources and infrastructure you have here, but also to make sure that workforce accommodation sites are designed and operated in a way that's going to reduce the risk of bad things happening both in the work camp and in the community here. So we're willing to have future community tables that probably extend into next year. We're going to build our community services and infrastructure management plan around these community tables, and the district will see a draft before too long, and we'll also build a socioeconomic plan. And that socioeconomic plan is the living, breathing document that's going to carry us through construction and basically be a reflection of the community table, what we've heard, and we'll be continuing to engage with that community table group all through our construction. How's it going? Is it going better or worse than we thought? Do we need to adjust the plan? It's going to be a living document, and we're committed to engage with that group all the way through.
Mr. Schiller, that's, I'd say that's the time I'll give you maybe two minutes, just to see if you have anything in conclusion before we open it up to...
Two minutes?
Yeah.
I can finish in two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So public engagement, the results of this community table, I mentioned that the routing intends to be the main themes for a community open house, community engagement session in the start of the year. Date's still to be determined and so forth. We'll do some advertising so that the community's well aware of that event. Local and indigenous contracting and hiring, before we put any, before we hire any general contractor on any of the themes on the project, we're going to engage local and indigenous businesses that may be interested in working on the project and have them meet the general contractors. That's it.
Awesome, thank you. That's all. Counselor Anderson?
The Fortis line goes through two of our neighborhoods. I can think of the East Loggers Lane area around Finch Drive, but also in the back end of Valley Cliff, the Ravens Plateau, Cherry Drive sub-area area. I'm not sure to the extent that we have a neighborhood planning exercise underway or just wrapping up in the East Loggers Lane, Finch Drive area, whether that has been a venue for sharing of information with residents and planning staff regarding your line and pictures of it. It's been brought to my attention that near the Cherry Drive area, you have an installation, an automatic isolation valve. There's some infrastructure there on the line that there are some neighborhood questions about. How would you suggest that the neighborhood could, or residents could approach you through your line here or await the community tables? What's the best forum for addressing these questions regarding installations in those neighborhoods?
Well, first of all, do you want me to take that?
Yeah, go ahead.
There we are, thanks Vanessa, just the bottom of this slide. That's our project toll-free line. So anybody that contacts us by email or through our TalkingEnergy.ca website, we promise to get back to them within 24 hours. Maybe we don't have the full answer, but at least we'll respond quickly and get answers, whether they're technical or procedural or, you know, process-related. So on the sub-area plan, we're very much aware of it, and we're aware of questions that arose at the open house a few weeks ago that related to the gas line, to the, possibly the existing or the new gas line construction. And we want to make sure that that community is well aware of the upcoming public engagement session we'll have at the start of the year and come with all their questions. Some of them have already approached me directly, and that's great. So we want to be approachable. There's our contact information, ask away, and we're trying to anticipate questions to respond to at the community engagement session. So, does that answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I had a preamble that I didn't, that I didn't get out there, just to councilors and to presenters. We are short on time, and I'm using it right now to do this preamble. I'm conscious of that, too. So if we can be as concise as possible with our questions and our answers, just to try to get through everyone's voice heard here. So next is Counselor Puth.
Yeah, so just a quick comment before I jump into my questions. I think through you, Chair, I've had some conversations with Fortis about the use of the term community table to talk about what I consider myself more of a service provider table, and I think the community's already been challenged by this term of community table. There's an expectation of public consultation early and not just on the road, but on the whole thing, and I think it's causing some confusion and consternation in the community as a whole that the community table is actually very restricted in terms of, or con community table is restricted in terms of who can be at it. It may make sense to have a service provider table or whatever you want to call it, but I think that terminology may be causing us more challenges than we need at this point. I want to just clarify, so my understanding from some information, which I believe has been clarified now through Fortis, that, you know, during the engagement, both Wood Fiber and Fortis were very explicit that the public, the ratepayers would not be stopped paying for the pipeline. But to ensure that, the BCUC, B.C. Utilities Commission actually needs to make an adjustment to some of the rulings, and then beyond that, there's actually no provision right now to cover, to make sure that Wood Fiber pays for the decommissioning of this pipe. And given where we are, just at our conference last week, sponsored by Fortis, thank you very much, where the, you know, we have to cut our emissions by 50% by 2030 and 100% by 2050. So when you do those numbers, it doesn't coincide with this pipeline lasting a 40-year MEB thing, so, you know, I think we have to be thinking very carefully about who's going to pay for decommissioning. So I guess my question for Fortis is, can, given the explicit promises, can we expect your support in the public and so on, when we go to the BCUC and say, hey, can we have some changes to make sure that Wood Fiber absolutely covers the full cost, including the cost of decommission? Can we count on Fortis to support for that?
Well, you don't need our support. The B.C. Utilities Commission is a watchdog on behalf of all of ratepayers, and so any of us that are gas customers, even around the table here, can have the assurance that the BCUC is looking out for you whenever they're forming a new tariff. And this is going to be a new tariff that they'll need to consider and implement. And you better believe that they're going to look at all the aspects of Wood Fiber's operation, both now and future, in their deliberations. And so that's still yet to happen, and we'll all be looking forward to watching that.
Just to clarify, though, I guess my request is that if you could be explicit with them and support us in saying, yes, we told the public this, and so, you know, it makes sense for the public to be asking for this. Can we count on you to back us up there, given the conversations, genuine consultation?
Well, we can have this conversation offline. I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for. I mean, we'll all be, you know, watching the deliberations at the BCUC table, and Counselor, you're aware of the passionate goals that we have to reduce our carbon emissions through some of the programs that we've implemented. We want to do that. It's in the context of our business model. And so, you know, we'll be watching it, and I'm sure we'll be talking as the BCUC deliberates on their tariff construction.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor, we need to move on to next, just to make sure that everyone gets their voice heard at least once, and we'll see if we can magically get around a second time. But Counselor Storres.
Thank you, Chair. I want to say thank you for coming in today and providing an update to our community on where you are at in this project. As we get closer to it becoming a reality and people are seeing work happen, it's very important that this sort of update happens so that folks can stay up to date on what is happening in our community. My question is, you spoke a little bit to the ongoing work that is happening right now in terms of geotechnical and surveying, but it hasn't become extremely clear on what you envision the scope and the scale of the impact of construction will be in our community over like this project. I wanted to play that up for us, please.
The construction in particular, Counselor, I think you're referring to, there's no doubt the construction is going to be disruptive. And I think if we talk about along the public roads, what we're committed to do, for example, is guarantee everybody access to their property during construction. That's something that we've always done. We'll certainly be doing that here. We'll be working individually with property owners and residents all along, business owners along Industrial Avenue, to make sure that they've got access to their property. Sometimes what we've done is, you know, advertised locally, put up large signage, making sure people are aware that businesses are open, and of course, that they've got access through their driveways to their, to their homes. So will it be impactful? Yes. Will everybody know about it in advance? Yes. We'll certainly be communicating both to the community and one-on-one before construction starts.
How long do you expect the construction impacts to last?
And you're talking in the public roads?
Yes.
I don't know. I'll have to find that out. We know what our overall schedule is, but in terms of the length of time on, in that Finch-Robin neighborhood and moving further west, if we could get back to you on that, we can give you a much better idea.
Mary Elliott, followed by councilors.
We know that there'll be amendments coming for your project. Can you speak to the timing, when you think those will become public?
We had hoped it would be last spring, then we hoped it was going to be in the There's an amendment dealing with the compressor station. If it's moved away from Mount Mulligan, it will require an amendment to the environmental assessment certificate. We believe that that's going to happen, and we're going to be able to announce it quite soon, like yet this fall.
Okay, fall lasts until December 21st. Are we going to get it in before then?
We're planning to, yeah, by the end of the year, I would say, be able to come out publicly with our amendments.
How many workers will you have in work camps, and when will that peak?
We'll have about 550 at the very peak. They'll be involved with three aspects of the project. One's the pipeline, which will be very seasonal, peaking in the summer and reducing, almost non-existent in the winter. The second will be tunnel workers, which will be very consistent, summer and winter, and the third will be on the facility itself, that compressor station and the custody transfer station. So between 2021 onward until construction is completed, there will be that cycle of workers that will be in construction worker accommodations.
Great, and final question, will you be decommissioning any current infrastructure when the new pipeline is activated?
I don't believe so. And if you're referring to the existing 10-inch gas pipeline, the plan is for it to remain in service. in service.
Thank you. Councillors.
Well, actually, that was my question, was around the work schedule. But maybe you could actually just flesh it out a little bit more. It was the number of workers, but also where they might be located, because this project stretches from Coquitlam to WoodFiber, basically. And are all 600 on the site at one time, or some over there, or some here? Are they working shifts, or only half are working at any one time? Could you maybe just flesh that out a little bit?
Sure. That's a good question. So on the tunnel side, we're looking at about 200 workers. 100 would be working at the WoodFiber site, because that'll be the western portal. Another 100 at the BC Rail site, because that'll be the portal going in on the east side. So if you can imagine 100 on each site for the entire duration of the tunnel construction. On the pipeline side, there will be around 300. And as I say, those will peak in the summer and reduce in the winter, but largely in the Indian River Valley, because that's where the majority of the pipeline construction is going to take place. Certainly, as they move towards town here, and of course, feeding through the nine-kilometer tunnel, there will be pipeline workers in town here. So in terms of the location of worker accommodation, that's what we've, we now need to go back and figure out. It would seem to make sense that one to serve the pipeline workforce in the Indian River Valley might make sense, but not all of them there. It would seem that the more proximate to the work location would make sense as well. And so we're just trying to work that out. And I think the comments at the community table were really helpful in helping inform that. But we haven't taken those and gone away internally to think more specifically about how many work camps and exactly where would they be. We have some ideas, and those were shared at the community table. We have six or seven different ideas that are out there, some water-based, some land-based. And now we have to go away and be a little more specific.
Thank you. I have councillor Stoner again to start our round two. We have, we might only have one speaker left, does anyone else have before we go into the gallery? That's fine. Okay.
So going back to our public, a public, you'll understand where they can input in this process. You spoke that you have 12 different management plans as part of your certificate, your EA. I'm curious in terms of the timeline for those, and either the requirements or the opportunities that Fortis will make available for public consultation on those plans, so not just public engagement, as you guys have talked about in terms of the community tables and open houses, but would it, public consultation to me is more than just inviting certain people to the table, it's making plans available for feedback from the broader community? So is that an opportunity? And so when and or where can people find a schedule of when those management plans will be available?
We don't have a schedule yet. The amendments that the mayor spoke of need to inform those conditions management plans. So in terms of kind of step one and then step two, the amendments need to be announced and filed with the Environmental Assessment Office first. And the sense we have now is that there will be two on the Squamish side and two on the Coquitlam side. So those would be packaged and filed with the EAO. Out of that, then the conditions management plans would need to cover those amendments as well. So sometime in the new year, we'll start to look at the schedule for those conditions management plans.
Thank you. Councillor Pooten.
So far, there hasn't been, to my knowledge, cumulative impacts assessment of these projects. They're all in application at the same time, and that allowed them to escape, considering the others as best as I've been able to read in the application. So with these new amendments being put forward, will we get a cumulative impacts assessment of the Fortis project together with the WoodFiber project, together with the BC Hydro projects and everything sort of all in one, so we can kind of understand the total impacts of this?
No, not in the amendments, okay? One of the purposes of the community table, and of course, Fortis held a community table the same day that WoodFiber held theirs, is to give a sense of that cumulative impact. And so the people sitting around the table could, for example, could add the number of construction workers together and say, all right, here's the Fortis group, here's the WoodFiber group, let's now look at the total number. And just so you know, there's a lot of discussion that goes on between Fortis and WoodFiber to make sure that we are working as efficiently as we can in terms of mitigating that social and impact to the community. We haven't yet, like I say, made any decisions on workforce accommodation, but in terms of the cumulative impact, that's, I would think largely what you're expecting, that WoodFiber and Fortis are working on together, and that's, you know, yet to be determined.
And just to add to that, it's feedback that we have had over the last couple of months, is how can we kind of amalgamate the impact from a schedule perspective, from workforce, that sort of thing? And so we take that, and we're looking at ways that we'll be able to kind of combine that information when it is more finalized and share that in the community, together with WoodFiber, because we understand there's an interest in kind of understanding how our schedules and the different impacts line up. So we take that, take that back, and we understand that there's some interest in seeing it.
Quick follow-up.
Yeah, so just, you know, you mentioned when it's finalized. I think the concern here is to also understand the GHG emissions in aggregate, all of these things together before it's finalized, so we can, as a community, discuss the possible mitigations and make sure it's something acceptable. So it's the sort of thing I think we are hoping for much before things are finalized.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, that wraps up our council discussion at this point. Did the gallery have someone that could come, wanted to come forward and join us at the table?
At the table or at the mic?
I think we can make room at the table here. And when you join us, please sit here. Is it name and address?
Name.
Just name.
If you represent your company.
And if you represent yourself or organization, and...
So my name for the record is Tracy Satsby. I live in Squamish. I am the executive director of Nicely Sky. I am pleased to be here today, and thank you very much to the chair for allowing the space for me to ask a question. So you've talked about community engagement and how you have allowed the residents along Finch to know that you have been doing surveys recently. But we actually received many calls from residents along Finch Drive as early as the 10th of September, that there were surveyors on their road. And I went out and I had a conversation with one of these surveyors, and he told me that all they were doing was surveying water lines. He couldn't tell me who was employing him. This was McElhaney employee that I spoke with. Several of the residents along Finch also spoke with the same surveyor, and they got the same kind of question. It had nothing to do with the Fortis BC pipeline. They couldn't really tell us who their employer was. They couldn't say who was actually doing the surveying or why they were doing the surveying. So in the following days after that, the story changed, and the McElhaney survey started to tell the resident that, yes, actually, Fortis BC is the, like, the company that has hired McElhaney to do this work. And yes, actually, this is for the Fortis BC pipeline that is proposed along Finch Drive. So when I spoke with you, Gord, you had talked about the fact that you're starting to engage with residents along Finch Drive, but you only actually sent out a letter to the residents on Finch Drive on October 30th. This is nearly two months after surveying had already begun. And this is not really transparent or accountable way to engage with community members. So I'd like to ask...
I need a question. I'm looking for a question.
Yes, I'm trying to, yes, it is a question.
Okay.
I'm just laying in the background here. So I'm trying to determine what you are planning to do to better engage with the residents, because a two-month delay in actually engaging with the residents and telling them what you are doing in a residential area with this Fortis BC pipeline, it's not acceptable.
Yeah. Okay, can I take that one?
Sure.
So, thank you, Tracy, I appreciate that. Definitely would say that, from our perspective, that's not acceptable if people were hearing the wrong information from a contractor doing work on a Fortis project. That's not our standard, and that's certainly not something that's acceptable to us. So if that did take place, as you say, which we believe, we'll take that away and ensure it doesn't happen again. We are working to be proactive. We're trying to get the word out before we have anyone in the field, anyone near residences. So that's certainly our standard, that we will be upholding through construction. So if there was a miss here, then we'll work to correct it with our contractors going forward.
There was. So at this point...
Thanks.
Make sure we keep our comments to the table. Ms. Satsby, you've got time for another quick question, depending on the... And questions come through, and I will reach out to have them answered.
My authority...
That's okay.
My authority...
Procedural.
I just would like to actually invite Zachary up if he has a question of Fortis. He is one of the residents along Finch Drive. Zachary?
I need that.
Yeah? Do you have a question?
I think, okay, we have one. And if the question can be more, a little bit more concise than the last, although I appreciate, appreciate that would be great.
Sure.
So say your name and who you represent. My name is Zach. I'm just a resident on Finch Drive.
When you do ask me for the name of the place.
Zachary Mason, and I live on Finch Drive. So I guess, following up on one of the previous questions that was asked by a council member, there seems to be a commitment that ratepayers will not see an increase. And my understanding is that the order in council from 2013 directs the BC Utility Commission to include capital expenditures in rate calculations. Is that incorrect?
No, I believe you're right.
Okay. And so when they calculate that rate, will that not be passed on to the customers here?
No.
Okay. So what, when that capital expenditure is included in the rate calculation, who will that rate be applied to?
WoodFiber.
Okay. So we have your commitment that the rate calculator, including those capital expenditures, will only be applied to the WoodFiber.
To their toll, yeah. So currently, the costs of the project, the development costs of the project are being covered by WoodFiber until such a time as the project would proceed. There would be a toll for WoodFiber where the costs of the project would be built into that toll, and that's overseen by the BC Utilities Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that we can all, that much more discussion is appropriate for this project or this topic, but that's all the time we have. Thank you for being with us at the table, and thank you for presenting to us. We look forward to seeing you back.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So next on the agenda, we've got item six, which is a WoodFiber update. Looking for Ally Mears from WoodFiber LNG, and as they're getting set up for us.
We can find the chairs.
You can find the chairs.
Jenna?
Let me just put my...
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to you. If you have some mind, maybe start with an introduction and who's joining.
Sure. So first of all, thanks so much for having us here. I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the traditional territory of Squamish Nation. My name is, you know, is Ally Mears, and I manage the community and stakeholder relations for WoodFiber LNG.
I'm Rob Mingay, Vice President, Corporate Firds, WoodFiber LNG.
Hi, everyone. Chief Ian Campbell, Squamish Nation.
James Wilkins, Senior Registry Manager, WoodFiber LNG.
So thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. It's been a while since we've talked, so we look forward to giving you an update. So we're going to talk about, Chief Campbell is going to talk about the Squamish Nation and its involvement. We're going to talk in some depth about the flotel and then get into the management plans. I thought it appropriate to address, which is always the elephant in the room, which is when. So as you can tell, we've been much more active in the community recently. We've met with a number of councillors. We've been engaging. We filed our amendment on the flotel. That's, in fact, commentary starts today for the next 30 days, ends December 12th. We have started to furnish Soraco, 10 suites at Soraco, which is the building we've leased for management and engineering professionals and their families. But we are not at final investment decision, and we're not at construction date yet. But we're obviously moving in a direction where much more involved in the community and much more high-profile. So you can expect, as I've said earlier, you can expect to be hearing from us more often, and we look forward to the opportunity to engage. So we signed our IBA with Squamish Nation in February of 2019. We have been doing cleanup and remediation of the WoodFiber site. We spent about $12 million doing that so far. We've removed about 3,500 Creosote pilings, over 400 tires. So the remediation work is actually going very well, and you're probably aware, to the result, where there was a small herring spawn recently, which enhances things, so we're happy about that. You've also heard us say before that we are the cleanest LNG export facility in the world. We will be, and we're quite prepared to talk about that more in depth. And we awarded the first-of-its-kind Squamish Nation environmental certificate in Canada. I'm not aware of this ever being done in Canada before, so Squamish Nation is actually a regulator. So we have the province, we have the federal government, and we have the Squamish Nation. And we are the first LNG project to be certified, approved under Government of Canada's five principles. Doing business in Squamish, we've done, contributed, not contributed, we've done business at the tune of 1.3 million. We pay taxes of just over a million. We've made community donations upwards of $1,991,000. So we've invested in the community in one form or another, but mind you, some of that is taxes, but to the tune of about 3.3 million so far. So I'll stop and come back to a few things towards the end, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Campbell to talk about the involvement of Squamish Nation, and thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks, everyone. So I'm happy to be here to support the LNG project on behalf of Squamish Nation chiefs and council. I've been on council for 16 years, working for the nation for 20 years, and we've seen a lot of change around reconciliation, certainly with District of Squamish, as we continue to improve relations, as well as around industrial projects like WoodFiber LNG. The site is a former village that's been inhabited for thousands of years by our Squamish descendants, known as Swayat. So I hope you all learn the name of our village sites in and around what is now the town of Squamish. Our history is your history. It doesn't just start with Narves or Vancouver showing up in our waters here. But certainly, we've seen a great change upon the arrival of settlers to our territory, which we are now in an era of reconciliation and reconcili action. We ask ourselves, what are the actions that go along with that? To actualize reconciliation, the nation took the approach of conducting our own environmental assessment, as you're all aware of. Beginning in 2013, our dialogue with a proponent, which yielded 25 legally binding environmental conditions, the final condition being successfully completing impact benefit agreements, which our council has signed off on earlier this year, as was mentioned. With the IBAs, one of the integral components of that is economic reconciliation, to create opportunities for our members to move beyond abject poverty, systemic racism, and colonialism, to start to actualize an economy that includes Squamish Nation. In my tenure, we've acquired TFL 38, we've created nine IPPs in the territory, and we've done land use planning, which was very important to start incremental progress that led towards our successful environmental assessment of this project. our successful environmental assessment of this project. This has been a very divisive issue for our members. I acknowledge that some of our community members are here and I appreciate seeing you and your ongoing voice matters. We all want to ensure that the revitalization of How Sound is a trajectory that we continue on. So our conditions led to affecting positive change of the project around seawater cooling, around compressor stations, tunneling, and design. But now that we've moved towards FIT, Final Investment Decision, it's important that we continue to hold our partners accountable as a regulator, but also to actualize procurement opportunities for our members. So the Squamish Nation has engaged our community members around our entrepreneurs, around procurement, which is substantive, to allow for our members to participate fully in this project. You'll see in this slide that to date, there's been approximately $10 million of contracts awarded to Squamish Nation businesses and partnerships. And we want to see this exponentially ramp up over the next four years of construction, but also during operations. We want to see long-term participation of our members to seek meaningful careers and good-paying jobs related to this project and all of the stimulus that it'll provide to the region. So I'm happy to answer questions. I know that this is mostly around the flotel today. As a regulator, the Squamish Nation is also harmonizing our approach with the other regulators to ensure that our voice is heard on the amendment to the EA certificate. So we come here as a regulator, as well as a partner, and our continued support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ian. So this is, you probably saw this. This is a rendering of the flotel. Objects in the mirror appear closer. So it's an approximation of it. It's at the south end of the site. It will be secured to the shore. And then there'll be just to the north end of that, a bridge, a small bridge, footbridge, so that workers can access the site. Our plan at this point, but it's only a plan, is 14 days in, seven days off. In terms of, a key issue for Squamish, in terms of access to town, we're really agnostic on that. We want the community to tell us what you want. So there are acknowledged socioeconomic impacts of worker camps. We acknowledge that. And my former role in government worked on some of these issues. So there are pluses and minuses. Workers with paychecks in hand, spending money in the community can be a good thing. Workers with paychecks in hand in the community can be a bad thing. So we want to hear from you, what you want. We could perhaps do some kind of pilot, but it's really up to you to determine how much access you want workers to have coming into town or not. So we look forward to some discussion over the next few weeks on that. I'm going to turn it over to Ally and she's going to take you through some of the, more detail on the flotel, and then we're happy to answer the questions.
Thanks, Rob. So I just want to emphasize that we are trying to do a good job and better job of listening to community feedback. And one of the main things we've heard in our planning over the last couple of years that I've been working on the project is that there's really low vacancy in Squamish and that there's just not a place to house workers in at-market rental. So as a result of that, we have filed our amendment with the B C EAO as well as IAC or the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada and Squamish Nation, so our three regulators. And, you know, we have heard that feedback, but it's been quite anecdotal. So we have also put out a poll to the community. And our poll has also showed us that there's quite a bit of support for the flotel. So we see, you know, well over 47% of people saying that they support a flotel. Interestingly enough, 28% of people supported a land-based worker camp and 18, or sorry, 14% at market rental. So we do see support for the flotel within the community, which is great. Obviously, it will lessen the impact on housing. It will reduce highway traffic. We're, in regards to Daryl Bay, still working, obviously, with the district on that lease for Daryl Bay. However, having workers coming every 14 days will lessen the amount of vehicle traffic, not only coming up the city's back corridor, but also dropping people off and picking them up from the flotel. So what does this look like? And we can speak about this in a bit more detail, but it is a self-contained accommodation facility. So anywhere between 400 to 600 beds. And you can kind of see from the photo, it's large, it's a barge, but it is self-contained, which is great. And I know Rob spoke to this already, but we do have the 30-day comment period that opens today through B C EAO. We recognize that while a 30-day comment period is a wonderful place for different stakeholders and community members to put their questions, it's not enough consultation. That's not the way that we want to approach this amendment or any of our management plans. So we will be doing a very robust stakeholder consultation for the flotel amendment. Now, one thing that we heard during our community table, and I know Fortis spoke to their community table earlier, is that having that type of form, while very useful for inputs into general management plans, people felt that their voice wasn't being heard. So people were coming from different understandings of our project, from different areas of the community. Some of them were able to voice their opinions, some of them weren't. So what we're going to do for the flotel amendment instead is we're going to do six specific stakeholder group consultations. So six mini-community tables, so to speak, where we have a couple representatives that represent a specific area. So for example, the environment will be one, business representatives, the economy will be another, and of course, emergency response. So we'll have six different groups for that. The outcome of these stakeholder consultation group meetings will be a community flotel plan. So this plan will be created for Squamish, for the community, to make sure that we're addressing all the concerns that we hear about from the community during that process. We also will have a sub-plan, and Rob spoke to this earlier, on how much or little workers will be going and coming from the community, whether or not they are going to go or come. And it will be a pilot plan because, like we all know, it's great for us to sit here around a table and say, this is how it's going to work, but we need to have a pilot plan in place and make changes as needed. We're also going to be doing a lunch and learn as part of our flotel consultation, where we'll be bringing a panel of subject matter experts on the flotel and inviting the community to come learn and ask questions. And then finally, of course, we do have the comment period open to B C EAO. So that's the flotel consultation. I'm happy to jump back to that and answer questions. Environmental management plans. So we have been working diligently on the four management plans with the District of Squamish over the past couple of months. So that is the marine transport plan, the traffic control plan, the community services infrastructure management plan, and the emergency response plan. So we've been following the seven-step District of Squamish process for each of those plans, and I do have that detailed on the next slide. We want to provide meaningful consultation on these plans. Again, you know, having a comment period is great, but actually working with stakeholders that are in and operate in the community is very important. And so we are meeting with those folks. And we'll continue to meet with them and provide their inputs to making those plans the best that they possibly can be. As far as public comments goes, we are always open to hearing public feedback. We do update our website on a weekly basis. We also will be posting updated plans. I know there's already plans up there on the District of Squamish website from the last iteration of those drafts. And as soon as the updated drafts are signed off on, those will be posted to the website as well. And my understanding is that any comments that are coming from those plans that are drafted will be given to Wood Fiber to answer. We also are working on a draft construction communication plan for the community, which will be very imperative as construction ramps up. And finally, we are looking at the potential of reopening a community office so that people are able to ask questions when they'd like to.
You're getting close on time, so I think you need two minutes.
Sure. I've got one more slide.
Oh, look at that.
There we go. Last one. So this is just more about the environmental management plan. So that's the, just detailing the seven-step process that we're working to. At a very high level, we've made it through about the first three and a half steps. We're at that point now where we've met with every single stakeholder group that was identified with the district and are starting to draft those plans. We did, of course, submit plans earlier in the year, but we are now redrafting those. And we will be working on getting those back out to those groups in the new year.
So we're happy to answer any questions. I'm sure there are some.
Okay. I'll go over to you. Counselor Stone. Say bye in a book here.
Well, similar question that I had for Fortis is around the workforce and the numbers and the time period. And I've heard different numbers. Now, maybe you could update us with those?
Well, it's a ramp up. So once we start construction, it's, you know, the curve starts up. It peaks at about year two and a half, I think. So if we start at December, you know, January 1st, which I'm not saying we will, don't quote me on that one, two years after that, we'd peak out at the peak workforce and stay there for a period of time. And then slowly, as we get close to completion, come down. It's pretty straightforward.
Do you have approximate numbers, the peak numbers?
Eight hundred or so at peak, at absolute peak.
All working at the same time? Or is it different shifts?
Yeah, no, different shifts. I mean, this is a 24/7 operation while we're building, so.
Thank you.
Mary.
One of the things that we've been asking for the district, since the EA process is one timeline, and even if you don't know your exact start date, I feel like from final permits received, you can create a timeline that shows where and when you will be doing construction and the workforce that goes with that, where Fortis will be doing that work, where Hydro steps into the process, so that our community has one picture. And I'm wondering when that can happen, because we've been asking for it for a long time.
Yeah. I think it's a good question. I'd like to take it a little bit under advisement and just say that we will come back to you with that construction plan. So you're aware well before it happens. So when we give notice of construction, is it 90 days, James?
Yeah.
90 days before we actually can begin construction. So, but we'll come back to you on a specific construction plan, and we'd be happy to share it with you.
With Fortis on it, with Hydro on it?
We'll talk to Fortis. I mean, we're standalone companies, but we'll certainly be asking to work with this on it.
One of the things that makes me a little bit nervous, and possibly this is a question for the Oil and Gas Commission, is that Fortis seems to be working on a different timeline than you are. Your amendment's in, it's not really changing the infrastructure that's being built. And so since you can't exist without their project, shouldn't we be waiting for all of their details to be confirmed before you get your final permit?
It's hard, I mean, you're asking me about what Fortis should or shouldn't be doing.
I'm asking you about what you should be doing, because you can't exist without their pipeline.
Yeah, I think it's a really good question. And I think that, you know, they are different projects and the way that they line up might make sense to me and you sometimes. And then they also might not make sense to me and you other times, only because what Fortis is doing is independent of our project. And a lot of items that we need to get in place prior to our construction commencing are not being done at site. So while, when we announce construction, for example, we're not going to be announcing construction and having all the workers coming to site to start construction. In fact, a lot of what needs to happen for our project is actually just continuance of remediation work. And some of the bigger modules aren't being built at site here, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So a lot of that work happens, virtually every L N G project is built modular. So that will be constructed offshore and then brought in by barge. That work will begin almost immediately.
Whereas all of Fortis's work is here.
So you believe that you should be able to start construction prior to your pipeline, having all of its final details ironed out?
No, I don't think we're saying that.
Okay. I think we're, I think we're working together and we're working towards the same goal. But I think that, you know, Fortis is an independent company and they will be having different timelines than we will be throughout construction, because what they're constructing is different than what we're constructing.
I'm not talking about the construction town. I'm talking about, they haven't even submitted their amendments yet. They're talking about doing community engagement in the new year. You may possibly want to move towards construction before they're finished with their community engagement and ironing out the details of the pipeline, which you need to operate on. Just was confirming that you wouldn't necessarily move forward until pipeline details have been worked out to the satisfaction of the community at B C Oil and Gas in the year.
Counselor Stone.
So picking up on this timeline piece a little bit, we just heard of Fortis that they can give us a timeline on their management plans and when they were going to happen until after their EA amendment was in and that process was kind of seen through. And when I look at this table up here, you're in the process of doing a second round of draft of plans, but your EA amendment was just submitted and hasn't been approved. And so why are we going through the process of drafting plans for something that's where the goalpost is about to change?
Yeah, wonderful question. So we will actually be drafting our plans with the amendment in mind. So in other words, we won't be submitting these plans and then bringing them all back and including the amendment as part of the plans.
We're doing one...
We're doing one submission. We, of course, won't be able to, you know, submit those plans to B C A O until we've received that amendment. However, we'll be working in parallel with that.
And I'm curious, in terms of, we've obviously moved ahead with the amendment of the flotel, but I'm curious what conversations, if anything, happened with regards to legacy housing and actually building market rental that didn't seem to pop up as an option in your community consultation?
Yeah. So we, I mean, as we understand it, Soraco would not have been built had we not committed to lease it. So we have a four-year with a one-year option. When we are done, when that construction is done and we're operational, that will return to the rental market.
And so there was no conversation about doing something similar in a larger scale?
No. No, I mean, when we first started talking about the project, there was talk about using rental stock. That's clearly not sustainable, given the current state of rental stock. So, which is why we started looking at alternatives and why we landed on the flotel. But Soraco would not have been built had we not committed to it.
Counselor Penney.
Yeah, so, so many questions. But I was confused a bit about the housing. So we've had a 0% rent, rental vacancy since 2014. You got your approval in 2015. There was amendment in 2017. So you've gone through EA processes, realizing, you know, many people, there's a key housing crisis here. And, you know, you're acknowledging Soraco is a small portion of your workforce. Yet in the initial consultation and amendment, there's no need for a work camp and no impact on our local housing. It wasn't reviewed in 2017. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, what are we going to be adjusting or changing? Do you actually have an understanding of what the needs are? Because these things just don't seem to kind of line up.
Well, when the project was first announced and initiated, the rental market was one thing. It's something completely different now. Well, it was tight, but we thought we could accommodate through market rental. We've come to the conclusion that we can't. And we've come to that conclusion because we've gotten feedback from the community, strong feedback from the community. And our response to that is the flotel, which we think takes a lot of problems off the table.
So going back, so I asked Fortis about the key model impacts assessment, which hasn't happened. We're talking about different timelines here. At some point, the community needs to understand, like, this pipeline has been stated, is being paid 100% by Wood Fiber. Wood Fiber cannot proceed without it. And this pipeline will not be built if Wood Fiber does not proceed. So even if in certain levels, these are separate projects to some degree, they're entirely interdependent. So at some point, there is a this than that and this than that. And so our community, I think, needs and deserves that cumulative assessment of all the impacts, the timeline, how these workforces go together, how the GHGs happen. So I will ask you, you know, when are you willing to give us that sort of whole picture that then the community can discuss and get feedback and we can, you know, think about mitigations together?
We're always open to discussing impacts of the project with the community.
I'm asking for this cumulative assessment.
Well, we'll talk, we're talking with Fortis in terms of, you know, their timing and what their impact will be on the community. But we are, as Ally said earlier, we are separate projects. And yes, one needs the other to proceed. But I think some of these questions are more, are better addressed to Fortis, particularly on, you know, in terms of what their timeline is.
So I mean, just one, and this is a bit of a tangent, but it's a clarification. So I have a... So, I understand a bunch of questions went into this study, and feedback I got, was they left the understanding that they were told that Wood Fiber has nothing to do with fracking. And, you know, I wasn't there, I don't, wasn't part of the conversation, but just to provide clarity, your parent company has bought Cambrian Energy, which is a fracking and exploration company, and Wood Fiber, although there's not fracking on the site, is wholly dependent on fuel gas and will require a bunch of fracking. I spoke earlier today, but Dr. McNaigan, Medical Association Board, who is also on the Canadian Association of Physicians for the Environment, pointed out, we have very, very little long-term studies about fracking. What we do have doesn't look good, and it's disproportionately, in her experience, impacting indigenous communities. So, I think it's important that we have clarity and that we are understanding the full context of everything we're doing. If we're thinking there's economic benefits here, that we understand the full cost to everyone, and that we have clarity. So, can you clarify your interaction with fracking and where that fits in your support chain?
So, yes, we own Cambrian, bought it quite recently, actually, this summer, so we have the whole chain. Cambrian's a pretty unique, a unique company. It is, they are, yes, they do frac. Fracking is not continuous. Fracking happens at the beginning and generally does not happen again. They have a 98% recovery rate on their water. They are eliminating the use of chemicals, primarily sand and water. It is considered to be one of the cleanest, most effective, and fracking operations in the Montney Basin. So, we're pretty comfortable with it. And, you know, if you want to talk about full-chain emissions and GHG, we're happy to have a discussion. It's probably not the appropriate time here, but we've got a very progressive, well-managed, environmentally sound approach to extracting gas, and we've, I'll just leave it at that.
I don't have another question, but I think it's vitally important for you to hear that you are one project with Fortis in our community's eyes. So, yes, for regulatory and EA certificate perspectives, we all understand why they were separate, because you're two different companies. But how these plans come together, how they impact our community, how we as a council ensure that this project is a benefit to the community and doesn't have really negative consequences, I think that you have to understand that we see you as one project. So, when we ask questions like that about timing and how we should approve plans when we don't have visibility yet into what Fortis is doing and how they're going to impact the community, we have a problem with that. So, yes, we understand, you're two different companies, but you're the primary driver of this in our community. And so, you need to be able to understand our perspective. It's one project.
I think we do. We hear you loud and clear, and your comments are not going on deaf ears.
Okay.
So, allow us to respond.
All right, thank you. That's all I need, and we should open up the floor to the committee.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on that. I mean, we did just recently have our community table, and one of the reasons that we did those back-to-back and having Fortis in the morning and Wood Fiber in the afternoon is to start to have those conversations as close together as we can with the same representatives from the community, so that, you know, it is the coming together. Similarly, whenever we've been doing community events, we've been bringing Fortis and vice versa, inviting ourselves into those conversations together, so that we are hearing everything at the same time. So, we'll continue to progress forward and do better at that.
Thank you. And I'll, I think we'll wrap the conversation there, but I will invite, did the gallery have someone they wanted to put forward to speak, ask you questions? If you could join us, I think we have a chair there at the, what's that? Or the podium, podium or table, whatever you prefer. And stay here. Don't, don't touch the mic. Sorry. It's a little low for me. I think we'll be okay. Okay, if you, sorry for that. If you could state your name.
My name's Owen Fenton. I'm a research director for my CEDUS Sky, and I have a series of brief questions to which I hope the answers will be.
Perfect. You have, we have five minutes.
Thank you. First question, for your community engagement, how will you determine who are the stakeholders?
Yeah, great question. So, it'll be very similar stakeholders that were a part of our community table. We will also look to the district for their suggested community representatives as well. We're going to try and invite more people than the community table, and because we'll be doing those six specific sessions, we'll be able to invite more people instead of less.
You will, I hope, include some members of the community and stakeholders, it's not who are your subcontractors that you appreciate.
Well, and we did at our community.
19,000 people in Squamish who would be quite interesting.
Yeah, definitely. So, our stakeholder groups will be inclusive of the same groups plus some more that were at the community table, and then we also will be having a lunch and learning, where we will invite the community to come to that as well.
Other question, in your application for amendment, you included, and I was quite curious about it, that you are exploring the, a water taxi service or ferry service from Vancouver Airport for up to 350 workers. Now, I read your environmental assessment, and it said that most of the workers would resource locally. Could you explain?
Maybe I'll address the resource locally. So...
My first question was to explain what you're doing, exploring a ferry service from the airport.
I'm going to have, I'm, okay, you've got to ask them in the, or, I'm going to answer in reverse. So, with regarding to workforce, we are in an extremely tight labor market. We are virtually full employment throughout, sorry, throughout the province, sorry. So, we are going to do absolutely everything we can, first of all, to provide jobs for Squamish Nation, provide procurement opportunities for the Squamish Nation, and to provide opportunities where the skills are there for those who reside in the CEDUS Sky corridor, Squamish in particular. So, we'll do everything we can to try and deliver on that commitment, and that remains so. But we also know that it's not going to be possible. There are not 850 skilled workers in the trades we need in this CEDUS Sky corridor. So, we will have to bring some people from out of the area. Some people have to come from Northern British Columbia. Some people may have to come from Alberta. But the commitment is First Nations, Squamish first, local second, British Columbia, the rest of Canada, and then if we run out, then that's another discussion. But everyone is experiencing the same labor market tightness out there that we will experience. So, with regards to the, James, can you address that in the amendment? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. We're trying to keep our options open, so because we don't know where all the workforce will be coming from, and because we want to focus on limiting impacts on CEDUS Sky Highway through traffic impact assessment, we want to keep the option of water taxi direct from Vancouver Airport open as an option going forward.
Third question, the tunnel will be about nine kilometers long. Where is this spore going to go? I estimate that it will be about 350,000 tons. The Fortis tunnel?
Yeah, so that would be, so, it's a great question. We'll take that back to the...
But it exits at your site, so presumably Fortis has spoken to you about what it's going to do with it. Is it going to dump it in the sand at your site?
Fortis is still here.
Because the question is relevant to, if you have 20-ton trucks rolling through Squamish, it takes a long, a lot of truckloads through the streets of Squamish to discharge 350,000 tons of stuff at 20 tons a pop.
Yeah, definitely. So, we'll take that back to the Fortis team, and I'll be able to provide you with a more specific answer on what they're planning to do for the tunneling project, because that is their, that is their project.
Excuse me, one second here. We have representatives from Fortis here, maybe while we're dealing with both ends of this tunnel, and as Mary Ellen spoke to, it's considered as separate projects under some circumstances. You're jointly working on this, the X is at your site. We have representatives here, so maybe we can add some extra clarity while we have everyone gathered here today, so if that's okay, if you would mind speaking to that. Oh, you have to come to the table, Mr. Shobart.
I'll just be real quick, because I know time's at a premium here. I think we're speaking into the microphone.
You can have a seat.
So, the tunnel material, you're right, Owen, there's going to be a lot of tunnel material, both coming out of the Wood Fiber end and the BC Rail end. We don't know where it's going to go yet. There's a number of options that we're looking at. One is to possibly leave a lot of it on the Wood Fiber site, depending on Wood Fiber's needs. Those discussions haven't been finalized yet. There's a number of options. There's local people that we've been talking with that may want it, and there's development in town that may need to raise the level of their property. There might be projects as well in terms of, you know, hardening your waterfront that might make use of some of it. So, it's a number of options, and over the coming months, that's going to be certainly a discussion and need to be finalized.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For you again, Chair.
Yes, this will be your, this will be your final question, so make it the one you'd wish you asked.
Can you confirm, I know it's a condition of the Squamish First Nation, that there be no expansion of this pipeline without their approval? I'm not sure where the discussions of that went, but I believe Fortis was talking about no expansions within Squamish First Nation territory without their approval. Maybe you might want to discharge my concern by answering the question directly. Do you have plans to expand the Wood Fiber LNG facility beyond its current 2.1 million metric tons per annum limit, now or in the future?
We don't have any current plans. And if we did, we'd have to go through the whole process all over again.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much for your questions, and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
We look forward to more updates as frequently as we can. I think there's a hunger for that.
Yes, clearly so.
And as always, if you guys have any more questions, please just call or email. We're happy to chat.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're back. This is Committee of the Whole. Today is November 12th, and we're on item seven on our agenda, which is the BC Oil and Gas update. And we've got some people here from the Oil and Gas Commission to give some presentations. So, maybe we'll start with a quick round of introductions for the record, and then turn it over to you for your 20 minutes for the presentation.
Okay, Micah Kennedy, I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Engineer for the Oil and Gas Commission.
I'm Hardy Friedrich, Manager of Major Projects for the BC Oil and Gas Commission.
Gar Thorogood, Executive Director of Major Projects, BC Oil and Gas Commission.
Suzanne Matthews, Assistant Supervisor of Engineering Strategic and Technical Services with the Oil and Gas Commission.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity. We have, we've put together a presentation, but we also kind of understand that, you know, we haven't had a chance to sit with the Committee of the Whole for a while, so this gives us an opportunity to update. I've got a couple of general slides on the Oil and Gas Commission and exactly who we are, where we're located, and what we're responsible for as background, but I also want to be mindful of the time that we have and understand that you probably have some very specific questions with relation to Wood Fiber LNG as well as the Eagle Mountain Pipeline. So, if you guys don't want to get too far into the slides, I am okay with speeding through them, which I probably will anyway. But we are a crown corporation. We have a board that we report to, and they report up through the Chair. The board is actually the Deputy Minister of the Ministry of Energy, Mines and Petroleum Resources. We are a self-funded regulator, so essentially, we use a combination of application fees and everything else that come in from folks that are looking for permits or activity, anywhere from the upstream, midstream, and downstream. So, well sites, the whole process of producing the natural gas and petroleum, and then to the pipelines, and then downstream to LNG facilities, refineries, and other major plants that we have responsibility for. So, we do look after all production, and we do it in a safe and responsible manner, looking after the public of BC, applying a number of different pieces of legislation. Mainly, most of our work is under the Oil and Gas Activities Act, but we do have some specified enactment ability under, thanks Hardy. Hardy made the slides, I'm just the guy who can do the talking. So, we do look after a whole pile of operational bits and pieces, and I'm sure we're going to get into that as we start talking about the whole Wood Fiber side of things. So, supporting regulation is a big part of our work, is done under the Environmental Protection and Management Regulation and the Emergency Management Regulation, and what is more of our recent regulation is the LNG Facility Regulation and Pipeline Regulation. Other acts that we do issue permits under and have specified enactment ability is the Land Act, Water Act, Forest Act, Environmental Management Act, and the Heritage Conservation Act. So, all of those do play a part in most of the projects that we look after, including Wood Fiber and the Eagle Mountain Pipeline. We've put together a little bit of a quick overview of the regulatory life cycle for major projects. So, there's the pre-engagement side and environmental assessments, where we are involved, just like the District of Squamish, in the environmental assessment working groups under the Environmental Assessment Act and through the Environmental Assessment Office. And we sit at those tables, like any other interested party, as we move forward with an environmental assessment. Most of our stuff at that time is comments, proponents, if they receive an EA certificate or not. They can apply for a permit through the process. They can also apply for a permit after the EA is done. In this case, they applied for a facility permit for Wood Fiber. They applied for a facility permit in June of 2018, and we issued that permit in July of 2019, July of this year. And this gives us, this meeting is our first time to actually sit and talk since that permit facility has been issued. But we do have the application phase, and then we have to remember that as construction starts and operation and maintenance, there is a whole role for us as the regulator as that whole bit moves forward. Our next batch of slides start getting into project-specific, and Hardy's prepared to speak to that. We'll go through those slides. If you have questions, I think we're fairly flexible. You can ask them during the presentation, or we can just kind of wait until afterwards.
So, Counselor, I think I'd prefer to wait till the end, just so we can better manage the time, so I'll make sure you get through the slides, so you get us all the information and present us, and then we can save us asking questions, maybe answering them some sort of time.
Certainly.
Yep, sounds good. A few high-level facts here. I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with the export capacity. The provincial environmental assessment certificate was issued October 2015, and then our permit, as Garth mentioned, was issued in July of this year. It's hard to fit a year's worth of permit or application review onto a slide, but there's a few highlights here. It was issued, or, applied for in June 2018, and then we issued the LNG facility permit in July 2019. The permit contains 35 conditions. That's conditions that are specific to the project itself, in addition to our legislative requirements under the LNG Facility Regulation, the Pipeline Regulation, Oil and Gas Activities Act. So, those 35 conditions are, oh, I got hurt, directly related to the project itself. And if you read through the conditions, you'll see they're pretty comprehensive. Key considerations are related to noise, flaring, floating storage, risk assessments. So, more into the current status now, so, since the permit was issued, generally, the next step for a project, a facility project like this, would be, it's called the leave-to-construct phase. So, as you read through the permit, you'll see some conditions that have to be fulfilled prior to construction. So, there's quite a long, review-intensive technical stage there, where we ensure that all the requirements in the permit are met prior to any work can begin, as you see in the next split there, prior to laying foundations. So, that's more or less, more or less the next step. Very early stages of that, as it pertains to Wood Fiber, so there's not too much detail there on that front yet, just mostly timing discussions right now and that sort of thing. So, these are kind of the components of our review, the main components of our review. It's worth noting, we're very involved in the BC Environmental Assessment Office review of the application. They obviously have a broader mandate than we do. We're more site-specific, so, but we sit through that process, we sit on the working group, and all of the comments and considerations that are taken through that process also feed into ours as well. and considerations that are taken through that process also feed into ours as well and we use those documents for reference and also make sure that our processes, our conditions, our regulations align with the conditions in the EA certificate. So LNG Facility Regulation was mentioned. We review the application in regard to the requirements there. The specific key review streams of application review are kind of split up into the engineering and technical component, the land and habitat review, which is the impacts on the environment primarily, consultation and notification. That is where the district would have been engaged and that is the consultation process with landowners that are affected by the project and then First Nations consultation as well. And there are other standards that apply as well for LNG facilities. There's the CSA standard, the Canadian standard for LNG facilities, as well as the Canadian floating LNG facility requirements and the Canadian LNG marine structure requirements. So those are national standards that also apply to the technical components of the project. And we also ensure they, during that application review I'm talking about and the forthcoming stages, those play a big role in ensuring that they're aligned with those rules as well. So same idea here, very quick overview with the key dates, the provincial EAC and just last week or the week before November 1st, we received the pipeline application for the tunnel portion of the Fortis Eagle Mountain Pipeline project. So that just came in through our, came into our application review stream. So obviously a different phase, just starting the application review. The application review at this time is kind of phased, so as I mentioned, the tunnel portion of the application has come in and then we expect after that the mainline portion of the pipeline and then after that the facility applications, as well as some investigative use permit applications that are under review at this time. So all in all, we expect all the applications to be in by first quarter 2020. That's not necessarily our timeline, obviously, but that's the indication, so. And again, similar to Wood Fiber, high level, the environmental assessment process plays a large role. Similar to the district probably, we continue to sit on the working groups for amendments and things like that. So any new processes through the EA process, we're also involved in that. For the pipeline, the key provincial regulation is the pipeline regulation. But I'll just jump down to that last slide again. There's also the Canadian pipeline standards that apply. All pipelines in B.C. must be designed to those technical requirements. And again, the second last bullet there, similar, well, the same kind of view streams. We have the technical engineering review, land and habitat, impacts on the environment, consultation and notification with landowners and First Nations consultation. So yeah, this is our final slide. Next steps, essentially, as I mentioned for Wood Fiber, it's sort of the leave-to-construct phase, which is kind of down the road and then undertaking the application review for the Eagle Mountain Pipeline. And also, probably the big reason we're here today is just establishing and re-establishing communication with the district and getting a sense of how you'd like to be engaged in the future, where, how, how often. We're always open for questions, comments, very responsive in that sense. So yeah, that's more or less what we had prepared.
Yeah, that's what we had prepared for the presentation part. We expect that. We brought the engineers for any questions that may get outside of the general major projects nature and we hope we can have an open dialogue now and as we move into the future towards construction.
Thank you. And before we start off, Council, this conversation, as with the last two presentations, we're going to invite a member of the gallery floor to ask a few questions at the end. But to start council discussion, first we've got Mayor Elliott followed by Counselor Stone.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. I appreciate it. We haven't seen or heard from the B.C. Oil and Gas Commission so far, so this is a step in the right direction. I would just want to say that we need to do better at communication between our two organizations because we found out about the facility permit through our general website portal. That's how we were informed, the same way someone would inform me that there was a dog on the loose in their neighborhood, like it should have gone to a specific person. So we need to make sure that our communication is better in the future and Mr. Buckson would be the right person to talk to afterwards in terms of who that should be. My specific questions are, through the environmental assessment process, you know, our community had a lot of questions about emergency management and enforcement and we heard many times from the EA office, well, that will get dealt with at the permit phase, which then puts it in your hands. So what opportunity is there for public input, if any, in the permit phase? Because our community was left with a lot of questions, but none of us are really clear about whether there is opportunity to engage with you through the permitting issues.
Well, our review, it is true that some of those aspects come down to our processes and we are the boots on the ground for the project for a large part through construction and operation that goes ahead.
Very cool.
Oh, sorry, I'll speak up. As it's site-specific, during the application review phase, we have the consultation notification regulation, which guides pretty much the distances by who is engaged through that process. So the public input into the application review process comes more or less in terms of how far away you are from the project. And so there's that process for public input into our formal streams essentially is where that comes in.
So will we be notified of opportunities for public input at the district or if people have questions? Where do they find out?
Well, I mean, if anybody has a question at all, they're welcome to contact us at any time. I mean, that's, we don't need a formal process to engage with, engage on questions and answers with the public or the district or anybody for sure, so.
But there's not a formal engagement period or public comment period in the same way that the EA provides for with amendments or that sort of thing?
No, it's quite a different process.
My second question is, I don't know if you heard my question to Wood Fiber, but Wood Fiber can't exist without the pipeline and all the aspects of the pipeline aren't determined yet. So I'm a bit nervous about the B.C. OGC issuing permits for a facility prior to its source of fuel and all the details around that getting worked out. So is there a mechanism by which the B.C. OGC would wait until Fortis has submitted its amendments and actually has a final plan approved for the pipeline before continuing to issue permits for the facility? The risk being it looks like a rubber stamp that can keep issuing permits to Wood Fiber without any certainty yet on their pipeline.
It's a very good question, same question we were asked when LNG Canada got its own permit too and I think that was prior to CGL Pipeline as well. So basically there are no obstacles to providing a permit at this time and as I reviewed the all of the concerns that came throughout, there was no, nothing that would stop really permit for being approved at this time, even though I understand the gas is not there. And that was the same question. So basically it was approved with the condition that the gas will have to be supplied at some point.
So you would give Wood Fiber permission to construct even if the pipeline isn't at the stage where it can start applying for its permits?
So they're starting applying for the permits. The Fortis B.C., we engaging with them as well. And again, pipeline, it's, it's, it's being worked on as well, the pipeline. However, it is a really good question. I have no reason not to provide the facility permit at this time.
And so although they are interdependent of each other, they are separate projects and separate proponents. So they have different application processes, so.
One doesn't exist without the other.
Yeah, they are, as I said, they're interdependent, but the reality though is if you were to look at that, so an LNG plant can apply for a permit, we provide that permit. I wouldn't think that they're going to construct a plant unless they have the supply. So we work through as the proponent and it's timelines, we don't set the timelines. So for instance, with the Wood Fiber LNG facility permit, it was over a year of review of that permit before it was issued, but that doesn't take care of everything. They can't go and start construct now. There's a whole engineering design, there's a whole aspect of the feed plant and everything else that comes into it that still has yet to be reviewed. So we view them as separate projects because of the application process. They are different proponents.
Counselor Stone?
Thinking a little bit on Mayor Elliott's comments, my question is, I'm curious, what are the legislative or regulatory requirements for the B.C. Oil and Gas Commission to engage with municipal governments? And so I've heard from your previous answer that there was some requirements around distance and ownership of land. However, with the issuance of the LNG facility permit, we were not notified until it was approved, even though it is on district land. So I'm curious, what are the regulatory requirements from your perspective for the B.C. Oil and Gas Commission to engage municipal governments on your permit?
Well, our engagement process, our consultation process is defined in legislation through the consultation and notification regulation. So the point at which the district would have been engaged would have been at the front end of that, when they received the consultation notification package, similar to the package that you probably just received last month on the Eagle Mountain Pipeline. So there is a legislated comment period there and a.
Can we pause and confirm with staff, have you received any sort of consultation from the B.C. Oil and Gas Commission at the start of the permitting process in the LNG facility?
I know, I didn't, but was or not that was delivered to another staff member?
We received comment from, or Fortis received comment from the district, they would have sent it, so there was a comment raised and so.
But Fortis is a separate project than Wood Fiber LNG?
No, I'm talking about Eagle Mountain right now, just as an example for the Wood Fiber consultation notification process. So I'm just using, I'm using.
For Wood Fiber or Fortis?
Yes, Fortis.
For Fortis.
Would not look back ever since I had it.
Well, I could confirm that our Community Relations Department required that it was received. That would have been a year ago, June, so I mean, if there's a follow-up required there, I can definitely confirm that, but. That would have been the time, the time last year at the beginning of the application review where the consultation notification concerns are taken into account and then over the course of the application review, those would be, if there were comments, work to be resolved, so.
And so can you just clarify what the regulatory, what the name of the regulation was for consultation?
Yeah, it's the Consultation Notification Regulation. You can find it online too. You'll just see, it basically guides how the proponents have to send out information to and to whom and what form that information has to take place. And then kind of the process that takes place after that in a regulatory environment, whereas concerns or comments are addressed.
One quick follow-up from Counselor.
And then a clarification on that, so that becomes a responsibility of the proponent to send out that information, it's no longer the responsibility of B.C. Oil and Gas Commission to seek that consultation?
No, no, it's the responsibility of the proponent to provide the information and then the recipient has the option to provide the response to us or to the proponent. We receive all of that. We ensure that concerns are addressed and, you know, through that process as well, there's also a path by which anybody can make a written submission to the Oil and Gas Commission on any project at any time up until decision. So, I mean, I hear that there may, there was a delay, a long period of time between the permit being issued and the consultation notification phase, which took place at the front end of our application period. So I can see how the perception of that may be, maybe that gets a long period, but you know, if there were unresolved concerns, they'd be worked through over that course of time as well, so.
Any other clarification?
Counselor Penningill followed by Counselor Rice.
So just for some context to my questions, I read through your mandate letter and I understand some of these regulations provide sort of minimal standards for consultation and engagement and so on, but your mandate letter from the government, it talks quite a bit about the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples and the importance of that, but also there's direction to you to enhance transparency and public engagement to ensure timely quality information is available to support changing public expectations. And we recently provided comments on, I think, the qualifying projects legislation through the EA, which sort of recommended that B.C. Oil and Gas has, you know, kind of does engagement, can cover all of this stuff, so the EA doesn't need to do it anymore. But what we're hearing here is, and I think our comments are reflective of the fact that, or at least mine did, that the engagement is already lacking and now we're seeing, you know, with what we're talking about here, there's a, it seems like a significant lack of engagement. So going forward, how can we expect sort of a much higher level of public engagement as your mandate letter seems to direct?
Well, I think that's part of the reason we're here. I mean, just because we have a very defined legislative consultation notification process, it doesn't absolve any commitments to build relationships with communities or people or residents or anything like that, so, I mean, I, we do have the legislative component, obviously, but we don't stop there. And I mean, as you said yourself, there are expectations changing all the time for energy development and, you know, we have to, we, it's up to us and up to communities to build our relationships outside of our legislative requirements.
So I think, just our comment, I think it's been absent and we have a lot of decisions being made in the absence of that consultation. For me, that's a bit of an issue, so I think we, from my perspective, we have to adjust some of that, some of those decisions made without the consultation. But on changing public expectations, we've seen climate emergency declarations passed across the province. We've passed one here. We were successful in having that supported at UBCM by all B.C. municipalities and that talks about very significant, you know, based on IPCC science, reducing emissions. So I'm wondering, in terms of your regulations and how you're adjusting, how are you adapting to how much fossil gas is coming out of the ground in light of what all the science is saying and the really quick timelines about how we have to adjust that?
I'm going to have to say that that's not really a part of what we're here to talk about today. That is a government policy piece and when it comes to environment and climate and all of those things, those decisions on a project-by-project basis are made at the environmental assessment certificate stage. So if the province has decided to issue an EA certificate as well as the federal government for this project, the role of us as the regulator is to move through the permitting phase and provide permits if they meet the requirements or the application meets the requirements. It doesn't get into the decision on how much gas gets produced or emission levels if the LNG plant is a go or not.
So just to dig into that, one of the other things in your mandate letters is that you do things that protects the environment and public safety. So I'm just trying to, like, is your mandate inconsistent with your sort of authority or like, you know, given what the science is saying and given you are the regulator and you seem to have direction to address public safety and protect the environment, how do we put those things together and how do you make sure those things are upheld?
So if there's emission levels from the. So if there's emission levels from the plant, we regulate those as per standards. So we will work with the Ministry of Environment when it comes to emission levels. When it comes to overall production and environmental safety and safety of the public, that's where the emergency management planning process comes into play. So that emergency, the EMP and the requirements under the conditions, both under the EA certificate as well as under our legislation and regulations, will look after emergency management planning. And there will be an opportunity as that plan gets developed to work with the District of Squamish. One of the things if and when wood fiber makes a firm final investment decision, we will be looking at doing a work, a workshop with the District of Squamish and others here in Squamish to go over emergency planning and to go through some scenarios. So that type of workshop is done with ENBC or Emergency Management British Columbia. And we've run a number of those workshops around the province. So we are purposely waiting until there could be a final investment decision from wood fiber. At this time, we don't have that firm.
Counselor Penningill, we need to move on. We can, we'll try to loop back. Counselor Rice next, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. So I've now, as a politician, been living with this issue for about six years. And back when this project started and I was on council, we set up a staff committee to look at different aspects of this, this project. And, and I was one of the council representatives on it. And we had the Oil and Gas Commission representatives actually come with it. I seem to remember you exactly.
I lived there, yeah.
So, but the issue that came up during that, and it was, there was staff, a couple of counselors, and then there was also people from the community. Maybe about 20 people in all were in this little, this little group. And, but one of the issues that came up then, going back five or six years, was around enforcement and, and the difficulty and, and maybe the lack of confidence is a better way of phrasing it, of people in the community around enforcement and not just in this office, but in a variety of different ministries and both at the federal and the provincial level of a couple of decades of governments, which had systematically gutted a lot of ministries of their enforcement personnel, DFO and environment and mining. There's a variety of different examples. And so I wonder if you could comment on that. And first of all, you know, how many, how much enforcement is there? What is the enforcement program during construction and then during operation? And secondly, how many people do you have to do that? And is there a schedule? Where's the closest office? How often might they visit the site? That kind of thing. And have you increased the number of people in the enforcement division since the government changed?
I can't speak as to whether we've changed since the government's changed, but I mean, there is about 20 compliance and enforcement officers in the province. And they are able to be mobilized anywhere and they currently are. So whether it's construction or project related stuff to Trans Mountain, we mobilize people there. LNG Canada, I'll use as an example, that's a project that's currently under construction. They broke ground, how long ago did LNG Canada break ground?
Last fall.
So they, last fall, they started construction. And it really, it's, it's water diversions and moving a lot of gravel inside. Our compliance and enforcement people have done 60 inspections since the start of construction on that project. And they've been out to the site numerous times. Typically, whenever anything new gets started, that triggers a compliance and enforcement inspection. They go out and they make sure that the work and the construction is being done as per the conditions and permits. And then reports are done. And if there's any infractions, those are reported and they have to rectify or remediate any issues related to them. So there is also some work being done by the commission right now at, on the compliance and enforcement side and looking at expanding it. But at this point in time, we've sit at about 20 people.
And looking ahead to when a project like this might be just construction completed and now in operation, is there a usual construction schedule? Or anything you can say what might happen?
Proponents will typically provide us with their schedule as something moves along. So they'll have their stages, whether it's site prep and then actual module movement or pile driving or whatever those activities may be. But the construction and that schedule is really up to them. And then our inspections will coincide with that.
But once it's completed construction in, in operation, is there a scheduled inspection job?
There would be a scheduled inspections for sure, yes.
Annually or monthly or?
So it depends. It's risk-based. Usually, same, we have integrity management programs for pipelines within the province of BC right now. And we make, make sure that we audit their integrity management plans at least one company per, every five years or more. So we, we've already invested a lot of time into our risk-based analysis of the tools that we can develop through new softwares and other things where we need to deploy people, you know, and do the inspections right away because we can't be everywhere at the same time. So we, you know, provide all the variables that need to be analyzed and then based on that, we're sure.
And, and to fit with that, the emergency management piece, I know that that's a concern for Squamish. And there is a requirement when a plant is up and operating, I think, once a year, have to go through the exercise of emergency planning with our, with our, our folks, ENBC as well as us. So they'll go through a number of different scenarios once a year at least to make sure that they can maintain their emergency management plan.
Yeah. Counselor Anderson and then
Thank you. Mr. Thorgood has pretty much answered my question already, but it's on emergency planning preparedness. But I'll just go through this just for the sake of clarity. So in your listing of the review streams and standards and requirements, mostly engineering and technical, I was looking for emergency preparedness planning. Would you describe it as being embedded in those or you also now refer to an emergency management plan as a distinct process perhaps? I'll give you my question. Over the last 20 years in Northern Hausan, we've had two oil spills, one large vessel sinking and two major fires. And each one of these incidents has called upon or prompted conversations about coordination and preparedness. So my, my question is, when we, as you described, the district will be consulted on an emergency planning process, could you say that we can, we can achieve some coordinated preparedness planning for Northern Hausan? Wood fiber is after all, a part of the Port of Squamish, one terminal in the Port of Squamish. But we should really ideally be, be looking more broadly at a coordinated plan. Would you see that your regulatory agency could be a part of facilitating that?
I, yes, us and ENBC. So I would hope that ENBC would play a pretty significant role in that in the sense that they fall into emergency management planning outside of oil and gas related activities, where ours are very specific to oil and gas related activities. But I don't see why we wouldn't be able to participate in that. We do have a director of environmental management planning and that's Peter Dalton. He is located in Fort St. John, but he is constantly mobile when it comes to dealing with things. So I actually just sat through a workshop with him in Terrace about two weeks ago to cover off what would happen in event of an emergency related to landslides and other things when it comes to petroleum and natural gas pipeline issues and potential issues related to the LNG Canada site.
So these are resources that may be available to us in future for a planning process and not least for a green action strategy initiative as well. Thank you.
Counselor Penningill, and then keep it brief and then we're going to grab a note from the gallery here.
So I'm just wondering if you can speak to, give me, you know, really massive impacts of methane, gas, climate change, what, what the standards are in terms of fugitive emissions, I mean, from industry and NASA and different sources I hear, anywhere from three to 10% fugitive emissions are typical in fossil gas operations. So what, what level of fugitive emissions do you allow? And then how and when do you monitor those? And what are the consequences? And how often are those consequences levying for people that violate on fugitive emissions?
So I don't think any of us here are in a position to speak about methane. So I would think that you're more talking about methane emissions and fugitive emissions from production upstream at the actual wellhead site, which is well, petroleum and natural gas produced at a wellhead, yes. We're not in a position to discuss that here. We're here to talk about wood fiber and Eagle Mountain and the permitting phase specifically. We can get you information on the methane thing and we'd be happy to do that. If we need to have another meeting around what the upstream looks like, we have some experts within the Oil and Gas Commission can speak to that. It's just not any of the four of us.
Okay, I think those are conversations we need to have a better understanding because it speaks to, you know, public confidence in, in your ability as a real capacity as a regulator to regulate the things that are important to our community. And this is a, a major impact actually globally. And then maybe to, because this will build an economic dependence for us on fracking, whoever comes for the next conversation can have some understanding of what you're doing in terms of long-term studies and managing the risk around fracking as well.
Yeah, I would, I would invite you to, to have a poke around our website and we'll be able to do that. We have a lot of public information related to hydraulic fracturing, methane emission and other sources.
I'm just going to add also that our liquefied natural gas regulation that we have does have a specific requirement under the Safety and Loss Management Program that the proponent has a fugitive emissions management plan. So we can give you the legislative links to that, but that is something that would be required prior to operation of wood fiber site.
Are you able to speak to how do you monitor and consequences for violations?
We are not able to speak to that at this point. Like as per our comments, the experts that we rely on within our organization aren't here. But I just wanted to let you know that that is an explicit requirement in our legislative framework.
Thank you. Just a quick, a quick comment as we sort of approach the end of this, this this afternoon's trio of meetings. And the thing that I, that I hear emerging is it's just the missing pieces. And I understand for regulatory purposes that they're, and they're dealing with different corporate entities, we're dealing with different pieces of this, of this project. And I don't, I don't think anyone here at this table, I haven't heard anyone that feels that the, that the effects are all being considered as, as one. Because at the end of the day, some product starts somewhere and is on its trip to somewhere else and that whole chain, that doesn't feel like it's accounted for. If it is, it hasn't been expressed to the community or, or to us at this, at this table. Any further clarity? Whether that's more, more meetings, more understandings, more, more information on that so we can understand how we got, how we got here and how the decisions made admittedly made by other, other agencies have been, have been arrived at. And it's, yeah, it, I don't, some clarity has been provided more than I had, more than I had this morning. But there's still a long way to go and a long way to go for our community as well. So I don't have a question there, even though I said everyone else is in there editorial, but I will. I will open up. Did the gallery have, have someone nominated?
We have two possible, Owen Finn and then, oh, you guys have questions too. It looks like there's a few different people with questions.
I might ask, just because there are several residents from Finch Drive that have been directly affected and that's not been addressed at all in this conversation today. If you wouldn't mind, because you've extended for a few of the speakers, giving us perhaps five minutes each, three people.
We don't, we're, I'm going to just, one second. I'm going to consider the, the time and also the people that we have in front of us and how equipped they are to answer that specific, specific question. I understand your, your concern. And I think that what we should do right now is, I'm going to go to two from the, from, from the, from the audience.
Do we have specific questions for the Oil and Gas Commission?
And I want to make sure that we're asking the right questions to the right people, which is admittedly a challenge with this, with this project. And I, I respect that. So we'll start over, we'll start over, over here. If you can come to the mic and, and don't touch the mic. And please state your name, for record, if you represent yourself or an organization. And, and given the interesting assurance of two minutes, we'll try to speak to someone else in there.
Okay. My name is Deborah McQueen and I own a lot on Finch Drive, soon to be a resident of Finch Drive. So I am currently on the roadway that carries the current 10-inch high-pressure transmission line, soon to be a twin line. So in the, the Fortis EA, there's lots of information meant to protect the environment, First Nations land, the actual pipeline. But I don't see a lot of conversation about the safety of people. There are lots of physical references to application corridor, right away on district roads, construction corridor. But there's no mention of the hazard risk distance or hazard risk radii for people in the immediate vicinity of a 2160 PSI transmission pipeline. In the event of a rupture, we're in a pretty dire situation. While those ruptures are very rare, and I think we can all agree to that, they do happen. In other provinces, as example, like Ontario, they have a consultation zone of 200 meters either side of the center line of, of the pipes that are close to properties, businesses, schools, et cetera. Does BC have such a consultation zone? And as a resident on Finch, that might be deeply affected by an incident occurring with the pipeline, was, what is the hazardous zone and the evacuation zone, both for the current 10-inch pipe and the new 24-inch pipe?
Partially. Yes, there is a consultation distance. It's in the consultation notification.
Sorry, we need to speak this way because the
Oh, sorry. In our consultation notification regulation, which I mentioned a little bit earlier, there is a defined distance by which landowners along that pipeline will have to be consulted or notified based on their distance from the center line of the pipeline. And that, as I mentioned, feeds into our application review process. So yes, we do have a legislated distance from the pipeline where, whereas, where consultation will take place with the landowners.
And what is that distance?
I think it's also 200 meters. I would, I would want to double check.
It depends on each choice.
Yeah, okay.
And my only other question is, is there an emergency preparedness plan in place for the current 10-inch 2160 PSI transmission line? Going with Fortis.
We will double check for you.
Because I'd like a copy.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, because your regulation actually says that Yes, it is. But the regulation actually says that members of the public in that immediate hazard risk radii should have that information. And we should know what to do in the event of a, of a rupture. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, sir, there's a member that, did that, I know that we're not going to be satisfied with all our questions. Did that help with your Finch Drive question? So I can ask over here, do you feel?
I think this person was before me. No, it didn't, but that's fine.
Okay, we're, I'm only going to have a maximum two, two more speakers. I want to make sure that over on, over on this side, there was, there was a question. Are you having to defer?
We have a few questions that address some of them, but let's have Mr. Finn speak. And then if we have a minute, I would, he happened to ask a question.
Okay, let's, let's see where we get Mr. Fenton's questions and if they'll address yours and we'll try to do this. But we are over, over time. So I'm conscious of that. So yes.
Thank you.
Please restate your, I know you spoke earlier, but can you restate your name?
My name's Dr. Owen Finn. I am the research director for my state of Scotland. And I have some questions which I've opened to brief, but those will be answers. Given that there are no floating LNG facilities in the entire OECD, my question to the Oil and Gas Commission is, whereupon do you get the expertise to license and supervise and regulate such a facility? There are none. There are two in third world countries that have just started up. There are none in the entire northern hemisphere. So how could you declare, what expertise do you bring to that?
It's, the, those floating units were designed in Norway by Moss Maritime. We actually went to Norway, we met with LNG, it was not CEO, it was vice president of Moss Maritime, Torres Colgan. And we had, we talked about those specifics. And we had, we talked about those specific tanks, as well as we talked about other things that they designed. And there are experts all around the world including units. So that's the expertise that at any time we can depend upon as well, if we have any questions. And we've been in contact with them frequently.
In addition to that expertise that Micah mentioned, the permit that was issued includes a requirement that wood fiber maintain classification status with a recognized classification society. That is another way to gain some of that expertise in relation to floating LNG.
It quotes CSA Z276, which explicitly states that it does not apply to floating LNG consultants. The reason.
There is. There is also an express document, EXP276.
That's the draft document. It has been finalized now.
It has been finalized now. It was published in 2019.
And I presume, I can read into that, that the Z276 will apply, even though the draft doc, in other words, that it will not refer back to the draft document, but to the final?
When the permit, what decision was made, the final document was published, and that is the document that is referred to in the permit.
As part of, second question, as part of its application for a construction permit from Oil and Gas, would I ever file a construction plan, which we asked for today, or the merit of refresh your memory, 2113-2609-00? Is it possible to get a copy of that plan? Or do we have to wire it through to get it?
That would have been part of the application package. Maybe Hardy and Garth can take that away, is the question.
We can take it away.
But you kind of answered that if it's part of a submission to a crown corporation, which I do believe is owned by the public, that it can be released?
Yeah.
In other words, I'm looking for a promise that you release it?
Well, we can't make that promise. We're gonna look into that. I mean, there is, in some cases, a construction plan has some confidential material that would be safety-related and can't be made publicly available. So we need to look into that before we can answer that question.
That's at somewhere on our website as well, so.
We're gonna have to wrap your questions, sir. No, sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna need to cap it there, just so we have all the voices heard, so I'm gonna have.
It's okay, he has a few more questions.
Okay, but then that's your opportunity. So if you're gonna forego, no, there's.
It's if you wanna ask a question, you can.
That's fine, he can go, he can finish his questions.
Okay, thank you. If you make this the final question, we'll wrap this up for today, but we do acknowledge that there's a lot more discussion.
The reason for my concern about the floating LNG is the two 40-year-old disused, now laid-up tankers that have been rusting off the port of Singapore for the last six years. They were old when they started, and you are proposing to license them for use for another 25 to 40 years. They collectively will store the thermal equivalent of about 100 therashock besides nuclear bombs. That's a concern, and it's a concern that the regulator understands what they're committing Skolish to. Again, I would ask, if your assertion in conditions 31 through 35 are that the full Z276, CSA Z276 stringent, will be stringently applied, then there are all five requirements that before those things get in place, including a full condition assessment, a removal of all anti-fouling paint from the hulls, and ensuring that they are structurally sound for fit for purpose. Can I have your guarantee that those will be strictly applied?
The conditions you mean in our permit? Yes, they will. That's why they're there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much for your questions. Thank you so much, so much for coming. This provided some clarity. I do have one, I think I'll take one more question. Do you have, is it possible to sound your concern in one?
Yeah, it won't take long.
We'll do one final question and we're gonna wrap, and we're gonna.
So I'm just a long-term resident, we've been down on Finch.
Sorry, sir, I appreciate you trying to be quick. We do need to do the intro and.
I'm Jamie Martins. I live down on Finch Drive, have been a resident in Squamish since 1971. We developed Finch Drive property. In fact, it was my family that got that road in there. So I understand from everything I've read that the pipeline has a certain radius, and I'm speaking about the pipeline, but your role in why it's going to be there, or why it might not be there, has a certain radius on either side of it of potential for if it explodes, what might happen. And I also understand that in terms of the approval limits, that there's radius, I believe it's from 18 to 35 meters on either side, that that pipeline might move. Now, that road, if I'm not mistaken, is roughly about 50 meters wide, which means you're encroaching on private property, or you're allowing the encroachment on private property by approving these permits. So I think from our perspective, if the pipeline goes through, two things. What compensation are you looking and what kind of notification are you giving to current residents? Because we received none, none in this process, not a single thing about this entire process. It's been a, we go look for the answers versus, I think, the appropriate bodies coming to us and informing us that they're about to blow up our lives in every sort of way. We currently have two development deals, two development offers on our property that are extremely lucrative. If our families should be choose to take them, those will evaporate with this project. So we would like to be compensated for that as well. I need to know that these considerations are being undertaken in that regard. And then in terms of safety, I heard from here that there was going to be, that Fortis had not made any, anything they did was up for approval right now. They had talked about an EA amendment for where the station is. And so if we can be so arbitrary as to say, yep, we can do an EA amendment for that, could we please do an EA amendment to route that pipeline out of our neighborhood? There was a clear industrial corridor from the gravel pit all the way through non-inhabited lands that would give you the diameter that you need, straight into BC rail yards, and down you go, and it would be behind the mountain. So my ask is, would you look into that, please, and not completely disrupt our lives? That's my question.
That's, I was trying to break it into pieces so we could get it answered, but does someone want to attempt to tackle the pieces about that we can?
What was the question?
Are you going to encroach on our lands and how are you going to protect us? Because currently, there's nothing that's been said or done. And are you going to compensate?
So for that, sympathetic to your concerns, of course, for that portion of the pipeline, we have not received an application for that yet. We're not quite involved in that process yet. We're not, we don't, the application, we haven't received the application yet. So our technical review hasn't started. We don't know what the indications or the distances are at this point. If you, like.
The science is clear, there's no room.
Yeah, so many times, there is objection from landowners into the process where the pipeline goes. Many times.
You just need to speak to.
Oh, sorry. I just.
I know it doesn't really make sense, but yeah.
So many times, we've changed, the route of the pipeline was changed, and even by proponent, there is an objection from the landowner, especially if it goes through your land. There, so there's many variables, again, that are taken in effect, that are taken into the account. And of course, your, if this is your land, your opinion or where it should go, this all will be reviewed. We have a whole group of people who are engaged with communities and so for the whole division that does just that.
So I have the follow-up, some clarification. So the process for the approval of the wood fiber LNG took a year, give or take. So when that application for this portion of the pipeline, or the pipeline as a whole, however, if it gets broken down into pieces, I don't know, but that process, we expect to take a similar amount of time. Is that a safe assumption?
So it depends, right? Yeah, yeah.
It could take that long. And as part of that process, that's where your body would engage with affected residents at that point, as well as if they were engaged during the EA process. Is that correct?
It's received a certificate through the EA.
It did, it did.
So it's already had its route.
And then it will have consultation and notification under the CNN rank.
So when they apply.
So this next piece that we're being asked for is, should be forthcoming, should you get the application?
Yes.
Yeah. But there will be a room, and we'll also respond to that.
Okay, so I think, I think for, as far as we can, we're all gonna collectively get today, so I appreciate, appreciate everyone's time, and I hope you have an understanding of how important this is for our community. It does potentially come right through the middle. So there's gonna be a lot of moving pieces, and I think you can, you've heard the answers. So thank you very much for coming, and with the conclusion of our.
Sorry, can I just mention something very quickly? And I know, because I always do that, we really care about the project within the British Columbia. I know somebody mentioned rubber stump, which I really don't appreciate because I spend day and nights and weekends for my girls reviewing the project, making sure that everything is addressed. It's a lot of work on behalf of very many people. It's not, I would never rubber stump anything. I did work for industry, I started working for regulator just because my passion is developing industry that's for the people. And that, actually, the organizations and industries, they comply with all the regulations that are there. So we are here because we care as well, in our hearts and with our minds, we want to, if you guys have questions, we are happy to, you know, answer them. And we need a bigger workshop than this, forty-five minutes, because I can tell you where each molecule of gas counts, because I know where they're coming from, down to LNG. And I could explain to you, but forty-five minutes with the questions, it's, to be honest, it's not enough time.
You know, and that's, and that's, and that's a fair comment, and we would like to have, I would say, speaking on behalf of the council, I'm sure we're all going to be supportive of having you back as frequently as possible. I'm sure as a member of the public, we would like to have you, you know, on a 24 hours a day, you know, all the way, all the way through. But I think that there's a lot of work to be done there on that engagement and getting that, and if that is, and if that is the case, getting that message out and also making sure that the plans that come, that do come forward represent, truly represent that. And I don't know that we're gonna, we're not gonna reveal and resolve that here today, so we're gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Can I just confirm that people can see at least Mike's contact information on screen there?
Okay, so.
The last email address.
Can we kill a light, maybe, so we can get it better?
Can we get access to these presentations? Because they weren't available with the agenda.
If you forward us the presentations, we can post them on our site, if that's.
This is the archive.
That's okay. And the presentation that was here today is archived as well. And we do have, the district does have this information as well, so if anybody in the audience or ever watching this presentation would like any of this contact information, we'll, district's actually have to forward it along. Yeah, thank you so much for coming. We're gonna wrap it up. And that concludes, excuse me, so can I get a motion determined? Moved by Paul Elliott, Senator Star, all those in favor, Charles Fenny, motion carries. Thank you so much, everybody.